This is Tuesday, July 7.
Victor.
And...
President.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Hohndahl.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. Oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak to us on anything on the closed session. Tonight we have two items on the closed session. We have labor negotiations, city representatives Gabriel Garcia, Brad Wilkie, Colin Tanner, and we'll be discussing IBEW. And the second item is a real estate item. It's the 82 acres adjacent to Ken Adam Park. Anyone care to speak? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication and we're going to move into closed session and we'll see you in 30 minutes. If I can get everyone to take their seats. Okay, welcome back to the Lampoke City Council meeting. We're returning from closed session. City Administrator, do we have any report? Oh, city attorney, do we have a report?
There were two items on the closed session agenda. Both were discussed, but there was no reportable action.
Okay. I guess we're going to have another roll call.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Hohndahl.
Here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. Okay, if you'll please rise and join Joyce Howerton. Is Joyce here? Is Joyce here? Okay. Patrick, yeah. We'll have the invocation by our city administrator, Patrick Wyman. Tony, step forward. Tony is a chaplain with our Public Safety.
How are you? Walked in at the right time, didn't I?
Right on time.
If you bow your heads, Father God, we thank you for all the blessings that you have showered upon our lives. And Father, we pray that you will be with our first responders as they unselfishly give their lives and go out in harm's way in order to protect the citizens of this community. Father, we pray that you will give guidance to the city council and mayor so that they can continue to serve the needs of this community. Father God, we pray these things in your almighty name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Legion.
The Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, presentations, yeah. Okay, there were no presentations that I know of that happened outside of City Hall this past week. City administrators, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give my kudos to Public Safety and to Recreation over this last weekend with our Fourth of July festivities and helping to keep things as safe as possible. It's still disappointing the dangerous and illegal activity that goes on on that night and it really did zap a bunch of resources, but we had a lot of people diligent in trying to make sure that the right intent was there and that we had a good show at the high school and reasonably safe streets out there. So appreciate those people that cooperated, appreciate their cooperation. Thank you very much to Police, Fire, Recreation, and all the others that helped out.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. This is your opportunity to speak for up to three minutes on anything on the consent calendar. You want to speak to anything on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment. I'm sorry?
Counsel, I'm Will Skyler. I live here in Lampoke. My comment would be on consent item number three. This is the new hot mix truck. I'm a little bit confused. It starts out by talking about buying one truck and in the staff report back in the 2009-11 budget, they were going to replace a Kenworth tractor in a low bed, probably for hauling like dozers or something, and decided against that and bought just a trailer. And so that, he maybe released some extra funding or something because they bought just the trailer instead of the tractor and the trailer. And it's something about $248,000 in the total combined cost for the three vehicles. My question really is, on page three, it says the two replacement vehicles were approximately 5% less expensive than the original cost. Are we buying two vehicles or one vehicle? Now, the conclusion was staff recommends approval of purchase of a replacement of a 1994 asphalt truck, the '83 tractor, and then the '86 trailer with one truck. So is that really what you're doing? You're buying one single vehicle for the 190-something thousand? Or are there a tractor and a dump truck in there? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? City Administrator, can we get some clarification on that or is anyone here?
Sorry, I don't have the answer to that and I'm looking around the room and I'm...
Brad.
Yes, we're buying one vehicle. We're actually downsizing the fleet size from three driving vehicles to one driving vehicle and as Mr. Skyler mentioned, a trailer. So we're reducing the size of the fleet.
Okay, thank you. What? Do you have something to speak on the consent calendar? Sure, come on, forward. If anyone else wants to speak to the consent calendar, just come up on the right-hand side here or your left-hand side.
I don't have a problem with the new...
Would you state your name, please?
Sterling Rampf. Sorry. That seems like a good spend of money, but why don't, why couldn't we buy a local truck from a business near the area? Why from Bakersfield? It just seems like we should keep the money. It's $200,000 that could stay here in the community, you know? Is that a possibility?
It is. I can comment unless someone else wants to, but we're... Go ahead.
Yeah, we're required to do a competitive bid and so it's worth the bid.
So, yeah, we're required by law to accept the lowest bid, lowest competitive bid.
Right.
But we'd love to buy local. Yeah. Okay, but thank you for the comment. Anyone else on the consent calendar? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment on the consent calendar, bring it back to the council. Consent calendar is passed with one motion unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Are there any items that the council chooses to pull? Okay, then may I have a motion?
A move.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, for staff presentations, we're going to change the order a little bit. We're going to start with the item number three. We're going to take that first. The police chief, Pat Walsh, is going to present a plaque. Mr. Green, you have to come forward. You must.
Thank you, Mayor. Today we just wanted to honor Sheldon Green, who has been volunteering for Lampoke Police for two decades, 20 years. Started in 1996 and...
Can you put that up, Chris?
And one of, besides volunteering at all of the events, he kept us in good humor by constantly doing cartoons for us. And if you could just kind of thumb through those just periodically. And, you know, it's kind of, it's hard work that we do and sometimes it can be stressful and to have somebody come in and just really capture some of the moments is great. And we have a whole book over at the station that I won't share. But I did pick out four that were good to go. So Sheldon was always there, worked security at Ryan Park for the arts and crafts events and flower festivals, traffic control at parades, emergency call-outs, looking for lost children, lost elderly folks that wander away. He just was always there for us and gave tours for the local school kids and you're going to be greatly missed. And so we wanted to present you with a plaque. And it just says, "Presented to Sheldon Green, community service volunteer in recognition and appreciation for your 20 years of dedicated service as a volunteer to Lampoke Police Department." We also wanted to present our own cartoon of Sheldon.
Competition.
Officer Andreessen, where are you at? Raise your hand. There's, so Officer Andreessen is going to take over, so here you go.
This cartoon obviously alludes to my trips to the Lampoke PD on a motor scooter. My wife is trying very hard to get me off of that thing. I've had the privilege and the honor of working for the Lampoke PD for 20 years and I've worked under three chiefs and numerous sergeants and captains and the patrol officers and the rest of the people that work so hard over there. And let me tell you, folks, you have one of the finest PDs I think you'll find anywhere and it's probably in the state. And I think the record shows it. There's an old saying, sleep well, your guard is up. In this case, sleep well, your Lampoke PD is awake and protecting you. So I think you, the people of Lampoke, the citizens, should be really honored to have such a fine group of officers here. And it was a real privilege to work with them and really find out what goes on in our city. You're very privileged. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. For those of you staying in the back, there's still several chairs right up front here. I think there's four chairs over here, so... Okay, next we have a presentation by Mike Shelton and the Vargas family. Vargas Family Jewellery is going to present a plaque to Lampoke Police Chief, Pat Walsh.
Actually, thanks to the whole police department.
Good evening, everybody.
Mike, state your name.
My name is Mike Shelton. I'm a resident of Lampoke. I have been for 21 years. Today was the launch of a new program called Thank a Cop. It was designed by me and it will be implemented by me. Started in Santa Barbara this morning, here tonight, Santa Maria on Thursday. Basically what this means is this program is going to let law enforcement in Santa Barbara County know, we care and you're doing a hell of a job out there. This program is designed to let all law enforcement know that we, the citizens of Santa Barbara County, the men and women that work so hard to keep this county safe and crime-free. Our officers do not ask for thanks, they just show up and do their duty. They take great pride in their job. My goal is to let them know we appreciate their service. Starting in Lampoke today, we will be giving out bumper stickers, buttons at several businesses throughout the town. Everyone has given me overwhelming support. We need to change the negative dialogue to positive when it comes to law enforcement. We need to remember that we have a say in this. And I say enough is enough. It's time to thank a cop. So at this time, I'd like to present Chief Walsh with a plaque that all you officers need to read and be proud of.
You want to read?
No, you can.
Oh, you made me read?
Yeah.
So really, this, I'm receiving this on behalf of all of you, law enforcement and dispatchers and jailers over there. And it says, "To the officers of the Lampoke Police Department, Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Office and California Highway Patrol, we, the citizens of the wonderful Lampoke Valley and all of Santa Barbara County, would like to thank each and every one of you for your never-ending service and dedication. Putting your life on the line every day takes a special kind of person. We are fortunate to have officers like yourself to protect and serve us like no one else can. The hope is that people all over the state and nation will take a little time out of each day to thank a cop. Let's start now." Mayor, can I just say?
Of course.
Before we go, I'd like everybody from the PD to go outside when we're done here and we'll take a picture with Mike and we'll take a picture with Sheldon.
(roar).
Yeah. Yes, yes, Bolt, you'll be in the picture. Oh, it was Hank. I got it, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Sheldon, thank you on behalf of the city and our police officers and thank you officers for doing what you do. Okay, not to be outdone, fire chief Kurt Ladipal will present an update on the proposed fire station.
(inaudible).
(laughter).
(inaudible).
Now we got room.
(inaudible).
Give the doors a chance to close.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, those of you in the audience who I'm sure are just thrilled to have this presentation, and those of you at home. As promised, I promised you a update on July the 7th of the status of the new fire station and that is the update I'm presenting. We have refined the site plan. You'll see some refinements of the conceptual drawings. If you recall, this is the airport property at O Street and Aviation. We believe this complements that corner very well. We like the traffic flow, particularly like the rear access out the rear gate to the gate to the runway. This, as you've heard from me many, many times in the past, the projected lifespan of this station, once it's built, is well in excess of 50 years and that includes construction grade as well as office space. When we started this project, my very first presentation to you, we projected the cost at $16,355,818. On a few more slides, I'll show you how much work we've done to shave that down. During the evaluation between the last time we met and now, we were approached by a private developer and asked if we would be interested in having the station at the other end of the street on a private parcel. At that time, they proposed a concept of a public-private partnership. That proposal has not borne fruit, so we're recommending we move forward with this site. As I said, we continue to refine the project. These are some of the requirements as part of our planning process, as you all know. This is a conceptual drawing, looking at the station from the corner, as if you're standing right there at the corner of O and Aviation. You're looking at the front apron of the station. This is the entry view from Aviation. The main entrance is here, offices along this wall. So here's where we're at. As you know, we spent most of a year in the needs assessment, went back to the drawing board a few times. The architectural program, which is some of the results you're seeing now, is complete. The site feasibility studies for the purpose of design are done. There are some additional studies that are, that will be required as part of the planning process. The preliminary design is complete, the schematic design is complete. I've given you just a little bit of it and it's moving right along. The city entitlement process is in process. The project was submitted to planning last week and is now in the planning process. The project schedule, you've seen this a few times, we've pushed dates as we've slowed down a little bit to make sure we cross the Ts and dot the Is. We are in the entitlement process now, which is we're sitting right here. Design development, construction documents, and permitting is taking place as we speak in the planning process. We will not obviously complete the construction documents or the permitting until we have final approval from council to move forward. Concurrent with this process is the development of a financial package and I will be highlighting a few options for you this evening, not necessarily for action. We remain with this timeline over here, getting into the bidding process, the construction, and hopefully occupancy there in March of 2018. One of the options I'm going to show you may allow us to speed that up just a little Land lease, if you recall, the first time I presented to you, we had a ballpark figure. I emphasized that it was very rough and very much a ballpark, actually ended up being more of a football field. But in working with the Public Works Department and folks from the airport, a fair market analysis was done on the raw land and then the determination is if we are to lease that land from the airport, it's roughly four cents a square foot, which brings it in at about $54,000 per year in year one with annual CPI increases the year after the first year. So it's come down considerably. We believe the positive side of this, if we go with this plan, we get a nice piece of land that suits the fire station well, it fits our modeling, and the airport does benefit to a degree with some revenue generation. Now, this looked better when I was putting it together. Many times we've been asked, why does it cost so much money? What we've, what we're trying to depict here, the building itself is 7,872,253. That's concrete, wood, siding, et cetera. The site improvements, it's your concrete, your asphalt, your landscaping, your drainage. Keep in mind, we have numerous requirements that have to be complied with now, none the least of which is stormwater runoff. Equipment and furnishings, the way we kind of talk about this is, we refer to this as F... FF and E. So if you were to take the building, take the roof off, turn it upside down and shake it, everything that falls out is equipment and furnishings, or FF and E. The people don't count. Fees built into here are utility connection fees, our engineering fees, city impact fees, and everything you can think of, we believe it's appropriate for this project to pay its fair share, and that's built into the cost. Vendors and administration, this is our data lines, city management permits, encroachments, et cetera. Built into this amount here is the cost of administering the project via Public Works as a Public Works project. Contingency, we've talked numerous times, some, some of you have met with me and discussed your concerns for cost overruns. This project has a 10% contingency, and I continue to, to impress upon our architects and their team how important it is that the project come in on budget. Now, I threw a figure out of $16,335,818 when I started the presentation. Here's where we're at, $14,559,000. We have done our due diligence, we have trimmed it, we have shaved it. Our architect called in a favor and had a project management firm take a look to confirm our numbers. So that's, that's the project as a city project. Well, here's a little bit of a twist, and this is what we call our public-private partnership, and it's down here in this bottom line. I'll caution you right now, you can't see this, but these asterisks, I'll explain those in a minute. The public-private partnership is basically a build-to-suit-lease-purchase in partnership with a corporation that specializes in this. They secure tax-exempt funding, and the interest rate is roughly the same amount as if we were going to go to bond. So you can see the costs start coming down. The caution is the reduction, most of the reductions that are shown on this spreadsheet are calculated in the event we do not have to pay prevailing wage, which will have to be acted upon between now and the time we, we were to interact, enter into this, into this agreement. There is one school of thought that because a private firm is building it, that the city is not really, it's no longer a Public Works per se project. That's probably kind of a gray area. You can see if, if it was ruled that it did not have to comply with prevailing wage. I have talked with the potential vendor, they fully embrace our desire to use local, local labor and local companies whenever possible. So if we were able to reduce some of our labor costs, the cost comes down a bit. Because it's run by a private entity, the contingency can come down as well. It's easier for a private entity to control their construction costs, they deal with contractors all the time, and basically the deal is, this is the amount of money you're going to build it for, period. The big savings here, even if it was still here at $14 million, the big savings here is in staff time for the city. To build this project will take a commitment of city staff to get it from point A to point B. Everything from going to bid, to managing the Public Works construction project, to, to doing the finals, et cetera. So there is a substantial staff savings by going with the public-private partnership. So funding options, I just, sorry, I'm supposed to stay right here. I just explained the build-to, build-to-suit-lease-purchase-public-private partnership. The next option is the certificate of participation financing. Brad is here and can go in depth. We've discussed that with you a little bit in the past. It's basically committing general fund revenues to a internal bond that doesn't go to vote, Internal borrowing, where we go hat in hand, all the other funds in the city and say, can, can you spare a dime or so? There is some discussion whether or not that is a viable alternative. I'll leave that to finance. General obligation bond, you've heard the city administrator discuss this in the past. The general obligation bond, as you know, would take a vote of the general population to secure money for, for the construction via a bond. So that's the update. We're, we're moving ahead. We are not moving at light speed. Due diligence is extremely important in this process, hence the roughly $2 million reduction in overall costs. And I'll tell you, because I know you're already thinking, well, chief, can you cut any more? No. I hardly ever say no. However, we have squeezed and squeezed and squeezed. Do we need a facility of this size? Yes. Our site assessment, our needs assessment keeps coming back to this size of a facility. We have trimmed some of the, some of the size internally to a point where I would not want to trim it any further. I go back to what I said months ago. The vision is to provide a facility to the city of Lompoc that will serve it well past 50 years, that will serve our staffing needs into the future, and not be obsolete the day we back into it. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, some of which I probably will not be able to answer, but I can certainly go get the answers.
Let me ask, chief, you said with the private-public partnership, there is a substantial saving in staff time and thereby money. Planning and everything is going to have to take place, okay, so the savings is that we're not paying for it?
The savings, well, all those, all those fees are still paid out of, so let me back up. The public-private partnership means that the company takes the project over. They use our architect, they literally take the project over from start to finish. That means they're the ones submitting the plans, they're the ones getting the permits, they're the ones running the construction crews. We do our normal inspections. We don't go to bid, we don't have to prepare the bid package. We don't have to assign special inspectors to the project. We don't have to have somebody as the oversight day in and day out. That's all done for us, just as you guys are all, you know, business, but as if you're going to build something, that's exactly what this is.
But the figure appeared to be the same on both, 1.2 million?
Hmm.
Was it?
No.
I thought the figure was the same for fees.
There's a potential savings over here.
Fees, it looks like it's.
Yeah, the fees are the same. What's not in here is, is the, the staff time, the cost of the staff time to oversee the project. All the permits are in there.
Fees will be the same.
Right.
Okay, but we're being compensated, staff is being compensated either way.
Right.
Okay. So the $14 million, if we do it ourselves, the 1.2 million, 1.26 million is actually coming back to the city. I mean, it's coming back to the city in staff time.
Yeah, it's, it's coming back to the city in staff time and fees. We're not sure we have enough staff to run the project.
So, okay, that's what I'm getting, so we would possibly need to hire additional staff or some temporary staff?
Possibly.
Okay, that's where.
As we move forward, this will continue to be refined. As an example, if the direction given to the city administrator is to have us pursue the public-private partnership, then we will sit down with potential vendors. There's really only a handful of folks that do projects of this size, and talk to them to make sure that we haven't missed anything. We'll talk to the city attorney to discuss the prevailing wage piece and see what it really is able to qualify at. The, the public-private partnership, the best part of that is somebody else runs the project.
This slide, I'd like a copy of it, if, I'm, I'm assuming the other rest of council members would like a copy of it as well, so.
We, we can do that. My only disclaimer is.
We won't hold you to it.
We're still working on this.
Sure, of course, you know, just for reference.
Because we have not received direction, and I would not assume that direction until I.
You can write a draft or something like that. Councilmember Hamdul.
Yeah, just one question, with all the process going, it's still going to be in the airport property, right?
That's the proposal.
That doesn't change, which, which I support 100%.
We, we have now narrowed to the airport property, particularly with the favorable, in our opinion, favorable to the project, valuation of the raw land.
Yeah, I think the reason why I support is that before, we're going to be on private property, going to pay them, we can pay the airport, which is part of the city of Lompoc, and they can utilize that funds to improve the airport.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, going right along that path, chief, I, I can see that, okay, we're down to $54,000 to lease the property annually, 50-year investment in the station, let's just round number it to 28 million before CPI. That's over twice what it costs us to build the station, you know, so it's kind of like if we could buy the property, it would save us incrementally in the long run here, if we could just move enough.
Brad, I don't know if you have a calculator there, what's the future value of the price of that property over a period of 50 years? You don't have a calculator there? Because, because that's, no, no, because that is important, the future value of the, of the, whatever we're paying for the private property. I mean, it, it's significantly more if we're looking at it over 50 years. So anyway, you can come back to us with that figure.
Thank you.
Okay, good. There are financial calculators that do that, so, okay. You got you. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, thanks for breaking it down this way, it makes it easier to understand what building costs are and the divisional aspects there. I mean, it's, it's not the whole building, there's a lot of other costs involved, so it doesn't look like this great big station cost. It's significant that you, you broke it down that way so people can see what the costs really are. It's still, it's still a big bite yet, and not totally sold yet, getting close, but we'll work on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, chief, you know, the benefits coming from the airport district, have you guys calculated what the benefits coming around full circle are going to be to the city of Lompoc, you know, as the funds and the lease, the lease agreement with the airport, and how that comes back to us in a way? It's going to benefit the airport somehow, but I'm wondering if they have a plan of what to do with it, or if it's coming back. It's all city property, but at the same token, I agree with Councilman Starbuck that purchasing the property would have been a little bit more frugal.
Kevin, do you want to run at that?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, I, I had asked Public Works Director Kevin McHune to be prepared to speak to the potential uses of lease money for this property, so. Mr. McHune.
Good evening, Kevin McHune, Public Works Director. So the airport is an enterprise fund, and we have ongoing annual costs, just like all the other enterprises. One, in the short term, one of our, what we see as an initial probably priority use of this lease amount will be the general fund distributed costs that are coming down the road for all enterprise funds. So those are new costs to enterprise funds for general services, general fund services like accounting, treasury, police and fire services, those type of things. So those are, those are costs that we will need to fund in some way, so that will probably be, this, this lease and all the other leases that we'd have in the future would be used in that way as a priority. In terms of capital costs, I'm looking at our master plan, we have, in our next projects will be, we have airfield signs and airfield electrical upgrades planned, we have identified the need of a perimeter road construction, and then a large project in, hopefully in the near future, is runway and taxiway overlay, as well as an extension to the east to lengthen the runway. Also, construction of a blast fence on the east side of the airport. So there, there's a lot of capital needs at the airport in addition to our ongoing operational needs.
Kevin, can I, can I ask you a question here? The money, obviously, it's an increase in budget on a yearly basis for this lease agreement and this new station in general, is that correct? I mean, is, aside from the bond payment, what are the other anticipated increases that are going to come back to the taxpayers, so to speak, because of this push besides the bond agreement, okay? I mean, that you guys anticipate.
Well, the, the airports lives to serve the community, so, so our, our services are to airport users in the community. As we provide, as we get more lease income, we can provide better services, upgrade our facilities. So there's an investment in the community in that way. The, the property that we're talking about here, the Aviation Drive, was purchased specifically to provide income to the airport. So for instance, selling the property isn't, isn't an option for us. We, we, we have to lease the property. And that's something we had covered with Fire early on, that, hey, you realize you'll be paying more than the purchase price of a property if you come lease from us. That's just the way the math works. So you, you either accept that or you don't, and, and, and that's, that's a fundamental part of the, of the deal with, with leasing the property. So I don't, I'm not sure if I'm answering specifically what you're looking for, but we're a part of the city community, and we provide services, and we need to maintain our facilities.
I got you, and I think one of my questions more pointedly is, you came up with a $54,000 a year lease agreement, but that's all negotiable and subjective also, right? I mean, you negotiated, but who, is it set in stone, the amount that you're actually going to have to pay? That's what you came up with, a four, four cent per acre, but where did that standard come from?
So again, the, we, our, our property comes with strings from the federal government. The federal government says we have to lease our property at fair market value. So that's the key, is what is the fair market value? We, we did hire a consultant to evaluate that property. We haven't leased any of the property along Aviation, so it is a little bit of a different animal. So we, we decided to invest a little bit of money into the study of that property and see what would be, do a market study of, of that, and that's what the response came back with, it was four cents a square foot.
I got you. With the lease agreement, being that it's full circle, it just concerns me, it's a never-ending story, you know what I mean? So I had to ask, okay?
Right, sure.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to go on to Community Development Program Manager Kristi Alarcon
Honorable mayor, council members, and the public, I'm Kristi Alarcon, Community Development Program Manager for the Community Development Division. I'm here to present our annual compliance report covering the period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. There are two components of this report, the Audit Compliance and Finding Report, which is the financial side, and then there is the Subrecipient Compliance Status Report, which is more of the programmatic requirements of all of the nonprofits we fund. On April 15, 2014, City Council adopted the Subrecipient Financial Programmatic and Monitoring Reporting Requirement Policy. The policy requires an annual compliance report to be presented to the City Council at a public meeting at least annually by the Economic and Community Development Department staff at the second meeting in July each year or soon thereafter. Following such presentation, the compliance report will be posted annually on the city's website after submittal, and that will occur about July 31 of each year. In addition, staff is required to provide City Council with a written status report on subrecipient compliance mid-year for the periods of January 1 through June 30 and July 1 through December 31 of each calendar year. The Economic and Community Development Department staff last presented the mid-year report at the City Council meeting January 20, 2015. This is the first time presenting the Audit Compliance and Findings component of the entire report. City Management Services Department will provide an Audit Compliance and Findings Report to the Economic and Community Development Department. report to the Economic and Community Development Department and City Administrator by May 15 of each year. It occurred a little later this year, since it was the first year we had to convene the, what do we call them? The Compliance Committee? So, it's new. Still figuring them all out. The report is supposed to include a status of all of the audit submittals and highlight and discuss any audit exceptions or concerns the auditor may have noted in the audit, as well as other financial documents submitted. In accordance with the policy, the Audit, Compliance, and Findings Report has been incorporated into this annual compliance report presented to council by the Economic, Community, and Development Department staff. You received a kind of bigger spreadsheet of the Audit, Compliance, and Findings Report, but in essence, these were the organizations that it applied to. Those were their disbursement amounts that they received of city funds, and you may recall that the cap or the trigger is $50,001 calendar year. The third column over asks was an audit submitted to the city of Long Poak. All but two of the agencies did submit an audit. The Long Poak Museum Association and the Long Poak Valley Chamber of Commerce did not. Then you'll see column four asks if they are subject to the federal financial reporting requirements. And you go down that column as well, and three of them are and three of them aren't. The FFR is when you're receiving greater than, I believe, ask Brad, but I think it's if you're receiving greater than $500,000 in federal funds. So, some of our agencies, it doesn't apply to. So then, for those who didn't submit the audit, the two agencies, you want to know why, and so they submitted an audit exception request. And that went before the Compliance Committee on 6/29, and they were both approved for a financial reporting downgrade, and they both submitted their 2014 990s. The second to last column shows the report period ending dates, and as you can see there, they are all current reports. And then the final column is if there was any audit exceptions or concerns, and none of the agencies had any. You will note that on Good Samaritan Shelter, while they didn't receive $50,000 in one year, what occurred with them is they had various years of funding through county pass-through money, and when you added it all up, even though some of it was 1112, all of it that dispersed during the reporting period was 59895. So in abundance of caution, we chose to keep them on there, and they were completely okay with it and submitting their audit. The Economic and Community Development Department staff began the annual monitoring process in February 2015. The annual monitoring included the following components. There's the subrecipient agency and activity monitoring for those agencies and activities who were funded with CDBG funds from the city, our urban county partnership CDBG funds, and our human services funds, as well as our multifamily affordable housing monitorings and our single-family affordable housing monitorings, and then, right now, our, well, one, and then we will soon have a second, commercial property monitorings. So you have a detailed report there of the subrecipient compliance, which consists of site visits to the locations where the activities are conducted. Listed to your right is a bullet list of all of the agencies that were visited and the activities that were reviewed. The site visits occurred during the month of April for agencies that were funded with 1415 CDBG and human services funds. In addition to Community Development Division staff attending these site visits, human service commissioners also attended, not all five every time, but one here and there to just hear what the agencies are doing and see if there are any concerns that they note. The site visits are very structured. There are two components. One is the agency's fiscal management component, and the second is the program compliance component, where we look at all of the federal, state, and local requirements as described in the various funding agreements. As of the 1415 activities listed there, all corrections that were found had been made within the month after the finding. We only had a few, so they are all now compliant activities. The next component of the compliance items is the multifamily affordable housing monitoring. This begins in February. It kind of goes through April, and that's just the inspection part of things. But due to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, they kind of got us a late release on our 2015 income limits. So this process was delayed until we got the updated limits in May. Notices of upcoming inspections were sent to property management companies and property owners the first week of May, and site inspections began fairly quickly, which is May 21. We've completed all the inspections. There were 18 multifamily properties that were included in the monitoring review, and all properties were compliant. The list to the right is your bulleted list of all of the properties that were visited. Now, when I say they were all compliant, they were all compliant because due to the timing of this report period, the annual period, the outcome of the multifamily property monitorings report covering June through November 2014 is what has been reported out here today. The 2015 inspections, which were, the last inspection was completed June 16, 2015, the notices of either no findings or corrective actions that are required were mailed July 1, 2015. We give them 30 days to complete the necessary corrective actions or submit corrective action plans by July 30, 2015. And then if there's a need for reinspection, which there typically is if there are, you know, findings, we want to see and verify that they've corrected those findings. City staff will start scheduling those in the month of August, hopefully, and assuming that all of our affordable housing property managers and owners have the financial means and abilities, they should be able to correct whatever items we found by August 30, 2015. The outcome of the 2015 affordable housing monitoring that began in May of 2015 will be reported out during the July 1 through December 31, 2015 mid-year period review in January 2016. The single-family affordable housing monitoring consists of annual confirmations and verifications of the owner occupancy requirements described in the regulatory agreements, which are recorded against the single-family homes, either through inclusionary policy requirements, redevelopment agency loans, CDBG loans, home loans, or the Long Poak Affordable Housing Trust Fund assistance provided to developers and/or homeowners. This includes those homes who receive assistance under our Single Family Rehabilitation Loan Program. Forty homes were monitored during the 1415 affordable housing compliance period. The 1415 single-family properties monitoring report is another one of the attachments there for you, which details the project name, their address, the owner, the type of the regulatory agreement, including the date of maturity, the date the monitoring was conducted, the date the owner occupancy was confirmed, and the date of expiration of the insurance policy for that property. Monitoring with regards to our single-family affordable housing is conducted on an annual basis, so this next report update will be reported out following, well, also in the January 2016 report. Our commercial loan monitoring, also attached as a component of the report there. Regulatory agreements have maintenance requirements with regards to our commercial loans. Typically, the regulatory agreement requires the borrower to maintain the property in a manner that's reasonably satisfactory to the agency. For the one property that's currently under regulatory agreement, we conduct a drive-by inspection because our regulatory agreement does not give us the right or allowance to enter the commercial property as a component of our inspection. It is solely an exterior maintenance inspection. So we drive by and get off and take a look at the paint and trash accumulation, if there is any, and verify that the property is in good physical appearance, and the one property was compliant. That concludes my report. Ask Mike.
Kristi, the Long Poak Valley Chamber of Commerce, they've requested a letter of exception that was approved by the Compliance Committee. I'm going to make a couple of probably observations, or maybe, I'm assuming that one of their, one of the reasons for their letter of exception, or that their request was, that their audit was out of sync with our request.
Right. And the cost of an annual audit is pretty high, especially for a small agency, but they do have an audit done by a CPA as we require. It's just they have it on a three-year period. So next year, I believe, they won't be requesting a downgraded financial. We'll get an audit from them next year.
And that was going to be my next question. So when, the years that we are in sync with their audits, they will be submitting their audits?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Allercon? You know, I want to thank you for the report. This is, as you said, the first time we've asked you to do this report, and this is a report that the council, it's actually the prior council and this council have asked for, due to some of the issues we've had in the past, and I think it's going to keep us out of a lot of hot water. So thank you very much for the report.
You're very welcome.
And we'll go forward to your next one.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to move on to appointments. Okay, we need to appoint, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. We're going to move on to oral communications. That's why you get paid the big bucks. Okay, oral communications. This is your operator who speaks to us for three minutes on any issue you so desire.
Ray Leslie, Long Poak. I've been having a problem with trying to get a water problem solved up here. I've been on city water since 2000. I brought in some paperwork and showed it to everybody, and one is an easement that you're running lines through my property. The easement you're running through, there's a grant deed and all this stuff, and it says the document transfer, dah dah dah, but it says for a valuable consideration received on which hereby acknowledged, all right? And the one that's a valuable compensation is a letter that I gave you that's from the owner, and this is all done with Campbell's. This here is in Campbell's name, and this is Campbell's. And it tells you in this letter here that that was the compensation. There is no other compensation on this property that the city has given anybody. This is the only one that we know of. And it's the water rights and all the stuff there. We have everything, and I've showed it to the city, and then the city utilities guy, he gave me this document here, and I've given that back to the mayor, and I've told everybody to look it up, but nobody's got back to me. It's the lousiest piece of paper I've ever seen in my life. None of the numbers match. If you look at the numbers up here, it's one through five, and you turn the page here, and it goes on to two of three. And they're just, they're different letters, different everything. And he's trying to pass this off on me as it's going to fly, and it's not. And all I'm trying to do is, for 12 years now, I've had the city water, which it was agreed to. I finally got ahold of a couple people that I'm going to get some more documents from, but I think this is enough right here that it should have been passed and it should go through. I come in and talked to the lady here today, and we discussed some of it, but it didn't get very far. And in fact, one of the comments that was made, I told her that I, you know, kind of remember a lot of stuff sometimes, but I was in charge of a lot of men and stuff, and I said something, and I said, man, I don't remember that. She says, I thought you were in charge of a lot of men. That was a rude comment. I really remember it, too. I always remember that one. Thank you. So otherwise, I do have Alzheimer's a little bit. Seventy-three years old now, and I think I probably earned it, but it's not something I'm proud of. Kind of upset me a little bit. Still does. But anyway, I'd like you guys to go over this paperwork a little more. I'd like the council to look at it real hard. I don't know if she can give you a copy of it, because I also put in a bunch of paperwork to get all of the paperwork from way back in 2000. They said that they destroy everything after three years, what she told me. And I thought good documents and stuff that you would have like this, that you wouldn't destroy them. I wanted the one I signed when I first got my water turned on. They can't give me that one. They can't give me anything, but they can turn me down on everything. I think it's really rude how this thing has been run. I think I've been a good citizen up there. I've thrown some parties for one of the mayors. I threw parties for every service person that left Vandenberg Air Force Base. I thought it was a good thing to do, to show them that we cared, show them that we're Americans. I don't think a lot of people think we are. We're Gestapo-type. But anyway, I had a good time doing it. I'm still in contact with a whole bunch of them. They're great people. They're Americans. I'd like you people to look at these documents again. I'd like you to look at them real good, and it saved me from trying to go get a lawyer. I just retired. I don't have a ton of money to spend on that kind of stuff. I think take it under consideration.
Okay, Mr. Leslie, I do have some of those answers for you. You requested it. You made an appointment with me. Unfortunately, maybe you forgot, but you didn't show up for that.
I did forget.
Okay, if you want to make another appointment with me, I can go over some of those. I do have some answers for you.
You and I have been over these ones.
Not to the one that you wanted some answers to. So make another appointment, and I can go over those with you.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Benjamin Kiblinger, representing Ava Blaisdale and the California Space Center. I'm here on her behalf. This evening, she's up in Silicon Valley as a keynote speaker for the Always On Conference, which is an investors group. So she's out there beating the pavement to raise funds for this project, and that pavement includes not just the streets of Silicon Valley, but includes Paris, Poland, London. She's traveled quite a bit, you know, just over the past few weeks. Otherwise, she would be here because, you know, she loves Long Poak, and she takes her citizenship as part of this country very seriously as well. well. So I have an update to pass around. And in this update, you'll find mention of the RFQ responses being submitted. There were some open items. And a shared folder for city officials has been made with access to Teresa Gallivan and also to Lucille Breeze. And in that folder, it contains large files, you know, high-quality documents from California Space Center partners. And the partners that have, you know, come on board in advance of, or really in parallel to the completion of the RFQ requirements, are really excited about this project. And there's a tremendous amount of excitement about this project outside of Lompoc. There's a lot of excitement about this, you know, project in Paris, for instance, where Ava secured the rights to, you know, the space conference that's linked with the French space business and also worldwide space business to host that in California, with part of it in Los Angeles and then part of it in Lompoc, depending on how far along we are at that time. She also had a meeting at the Warsaw Stock Exchange where she was onstage during a celebration for the top 200 firms, essentially the Fortune 200 of Poland. So there are a number of funding sources that are coming together, but one of the things that's really important is that she wanted to express that not only are partners like Bechtel and IMAX and Sony and DCA Architects important partners, but the city of Lompoc are important partners, too. And that's why you all get T-shirts.
The whole crowd?
So, you know, the sizes might not be your exact sizes, so I encourage you to change your T-shirts as needed after the meeting. And these are, you know, these are hard to get. This is very limited supply. We'll have more T-shirts in the future. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name's Mary Hawes, and I work here in Lompoc. I've been following California Space Center progress, and I'm happy to see things are continuing to move forward through the process. I can see the same energy level today that was around Ava when I first learned of the project. She's attracting attention globally, nationally, as well as locally. This is what's needed to bring the funding here to our city. Being from the San Francisco Bay Area, I can see some similarities to when I was there at the beginning of Silicon Valley. I can only hope that we can enjoy the same success here in our town, and I understand Ava's up north gathering momentum, enthusiasm, awareness, and funding for us. And I would mainly like to thank all of you for keeping this going and pursuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Rhonda Kiblinger, resident of Lompoc the last 14 years. I wanted to announce to everyone that I'm opening an art gallery. It will be opening this Friday. It's Discovery Gallery and co-working space on Ocean. And it's going to be featuring Lompoc artists. We have amazing talent here in Lompoc, and we have one art gallery for all these people. And I would just really encourage everyone to come out and support the new art gallery. It's amazing how it's come together. Please bring your friends, your family, your children. I just think it's a wonderful thing. And I wanted to say thank you to Ava Blaisdell. She's also coming. It's made a point, made a point to say that she would be there. She's bringing some international people. It'd be a wonderful thing for people to meet her and some of the people that she's bringing. So I just wanted to let people know that it's going to be this Friday from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and I encourage everyone to come. It would be wonderful to see you there.
Would you give us the address again?
It is 415 East Ocean.
415 East Ocean.
Discovery Plaza.
Okay. The open house is 6:00 to 9:00.
Yes.
What are the normal hours of operation?
Normal level, normal hours, Dr. Wilkerson is in the chiropractic downstairs, so we won't be open during the day, so he can have his clients parking. But in the evening hours on Monday, on, excuse me, Fridays, Saturdays, and some Sundays of every week, I'm hoping to have it open and invite the public to come in. And any artists can also get in touch with me if you'd like to show your work.
Okay, well, good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Next, please. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication, and we're going to go to appointments. Every year, we attend a national or an annual meeting of the League of California Cities. And for us to have a seat at the table to vote, we need to make appointments as voting delegates. So I need to ask the city council members, do any of you intend on attending the League of California Cities, or League of California Cities Meeting, the annual conference? It is in San Jose, September 30th through the 2nd.
Yes.
Use your microphone. Mic, mic.
I'm attending.
Okay, Councilmember Humdal is. Anyone else? Okay, city administrator, I believe you are. Okay, so the councilmember Humdal and councilmember, councilmember Humdal and the city administrator will be attending. So we need to, I will nominate councilmember Humdal as the voting delegate.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote on that. That passes 5-0. And I'd also like to nominate Patrick Wyman, our city administrator, as the alternate voting delegate.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, and city clerk, then will you provide the information, League of California Cities? Okay, good. Okay, thank you. That takes care of.
I just wanted to say one thing.
Yep, hold on a second. Come to the microphone. We normally don't do this out of, out of order.
My name is Stephen Bruner. I represent the First Baptist Church on Cypress. And normally, you guys, people, have things that are questions that you don't want to answer, or you, you know, are, you know, defensive kind of thing. But I wanted to thank you all, because you guys have been helping to make that church become something that people are proud of. It's the oldest church in town, and you guys have helped me to make it something. And I just wanted to thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Okay, so just to let everyone know, we normally don't take things out of order, but thank you, sir, for your comment. Okay, next, we're going to go to the public hearing. And that is, let's see, it is Fire Marshal Deena Foose.
Mr. Mayor, Council, audience, and viewers, good evening. Deena Foose, Deputy Fire Marshal for the City of Lompoc.
I promoted you.
I'm Michael Houston. I'm an attorney with Al Shamwinder and also the city prosecutor.
Thank you. He's been helping me with the details for the due diligence. This evening, it is a public hearing concerning the abatement and public nuisance of the property for 215 and 219 North L Street. That's the discussion before you. I have brought in some slides and some pictures. Think that that could help paint a little bit better picture for you for the property condition, how it exists, and if we can get the slides up. So if you can go back to the first one. So I just want to warn the audience that there, if you look closely, there may be some graphic language depicted in some of the pictures, so I just wanted to put that out there for viewer discretion, so I wouldn't offend anybody. Thank you. This is just a Google Earth aerial shot depicting the main house, which is on the top part, and the secondary structure and a three-car garage in the back. Those are both depicted with the gray roofs. This is the front of the property.
That's me.
Yes, thank you. From the public right away on the street. This is the property as it existed during our search warrant inspection. We were denied access originally, so we had to go for an inspection warrant. And when we did preview the property, we took a few pictures documenting the existing condition, so that's what you're seeing here now. This is from April 7th, and that is the backyard. This is a little closer version of the main house. It is a historical house there. It's one of the oldest homes in Lompoc. So that's looking at the back portion of the main house. This is the rear bathroom in the main house. You can see that there's its absence of a sink and some necessary sanitation components that we normally expect to find in a bathroom. This was one of the drains that we witnessed that day coming out into what we hope is the public sewer. There's a jack stand there in the back, possibly supporting part of the house. This is one of the trailers that's parked in the rear when we did do the inspection. So you're seeing some of the contents and the trailer there. This was maybe a back shed, original kind of shed garage, if you will. It does have a door that opens to the back alley, but it's blocked off by a fence. This is a outdoor shed that we would typically see storing just normal, maybe garden tools, and it had been converted with no permit to a full bathroom. And that's what you're seeing there. There's also a bathtub and a sink in there as well. The sink's cut off a little bit. It's hard to take the full picture there. We also have another shed of similar size that was behind the main house that we found converted into a, basically a studio apartment. It was finished, it had a bed, and it had all the evidence of people currently living in it. This is inside of one of the four trailers that was on the property. It also had evidence that people were living inside the trailer as well. This is behind the trailer in, towards the alley. So this would be to the rear of the property, just showing you the level of stuff that is This is the front door after it was posted for the notice of abatement to try and, the violations that were present, that spells it out to the property owner what needs to come into compliance and kind of get it up in a safe, inhabitable manner. Then, less than a month later, we had this fire. The trailer picture you saw earlier with kind of the pink Afghan throw in there, that is actually on fire in this picture. This was taken by one of our first responding officers. This is the only picture we have of the fire. After that, it was a full firefight engagement by first responders, because we did have some exposures, potentials, possibility.
Excuse me, Deena. Yeah, I'd like the public to, you can have your opportunity to speak, but please, during the presentation, please hold your comments. Thank you. Go ahead, Deena.
Thank you. So where the flame's going to the left, we do have a historical museum house, and there is a two-story apartment complex to the back, and this fire is occurring on the rear of the property. So we took, after the course of any fire that occurs in the city, we have the obligation to determine the cause and origin of the fire. And so you're seeing some of the pictures that were taken during the course of that investigation. So this is from an elevated standpoint, from the alley, looking in over the trailer that has been partially consumed by fire and onto the back part of the property. This picture kind of depicts the totality of what was back there at the time of the fire and what we had to go to, to come around to get and access that fire from the front of that property. That shed you see there, that is actually where you saw earlier the shed that's converted to a studio apartment. So that's the exterior, and that was at the time of the fire. It was not harmed by the fire. More conditions. This shed here you see on the left, that is the bathroom that we found that was converted you saw earlier. And this was today. The front does look better, and we're hoping to move forward to get better conditions there as well. So that's the end of the slideshow that I have for the pictures to depict the property. So that brings us into this evening. We're here, step four of nine, as part of a process to help encourage this property to be in a safe manner. And we believe we have done due diligence to get to this point. We're encouraging the owner to take actions voluntarily to do these necessary safety steps to prevent something like we had occur, like the fire earlier in May. So staff's recommendation, you have the staff report before you, would be option number three, to go ahead and adopt Resolution 5999. And that would authorize the abatement of the properties set at 215, 219 North L, but we'd like to allow for 60 days to repair. We feel that's a very reasonable timeframe, two months to accomplish. And in that resolution, we also have an outline. We've given several times to the property owner the list of what needs to occur and to encourage that to happen. And if he, if they voluntarily take care of all this, we won't need to go to that next step to force an abatement and to hire a contractor on the city's behalf to clean up the property. So that's where we're at tonight. If you have any questions, thank you. I'm happy to help address any, or have Michael help. He has also one more statement he'd like to make.
I was just going to interject a quick procedural point. Before proceeding with-
Your name, sir. Name, your name.
My name's Michael Houston, and I'm an attorney with Al Shamwinder. A quick procedural point, before proceeding with the abatement work, the city would need to go to court and get an abatement warrant. So it'd basically be the court signing off on the abatement work, and that would have, that process would happen after that 60-day or whatever time period council authorizes has expired.
Hey, sir, sir, you'll have your opportunity to speak. You'll have your opportunity. Yeah. Okay. Questions for Ms. Foose, the attorney? I just have one question. Deena, you said you had to, well, you had to have the police department come in and assist you. How many times were you turned away by the residents?
Well, we made contact. There's been an ongoing code enforcement case at this property, but personally, I made contact and encouraged through one of the persons that were on the property to have the owner call me or call our code enforcement officer, Steve Boggs. We presented our cards, and we asked to be called within 48 hours. So it was about a week later. It took almost three weeks before we could get back with an inspection warrant. So we allowed for a large portion of time to be contacted. We provided our cell phones, our office, our email, any forms of contact.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, so we're going to, not at this point, we're going to open this up for public comment on this item. Anyone that wishes to speak to us, why don't you just line up over here on the right-hand side? Make sure you state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And hold it to three minutes, your comments. Okay, first person step forward, state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Counsel. I'm Gary Dunlap. I represent the property owner, Sterling Rampf. I've recently been retained on this portion of Mr. Rampf's issues, and I requested that the council delay this public hearing. There is a parallel case that is presently pending, and I feel that this public hearing jeopardizes both the homeowner's rights to express the issues, to talk about the issues that the council has been presented by the staff. There are many issues. This is a criminal case that is parallel to this one, and I feel that within 60 days, we'll have that one satisfactorily resolved. And then it might be appropriate to discuss some of the issues that the city has with regard to the property. Now, I understand that that request of mine was not acted on. I was probably very late in getting it, too. in getting it to, to the council, but I think that it does certainly infringe on Mr. Rampf's constitutional rights to, in his pending, uh, parallel case. Um, I think also that it has a tendency to taint any potential jury pool or evaluation of his case by the public, both based on the publicity in the newspapers with regard to the civil act, this, this portion of the city's action, as well as, um, the, the action of having a public hearing. Nevertheless, and all of that being said, if the council does wish to act on, on this as a public hearing this evening, um, I want to suggest that many of the issues that the fire department, that Ms. Foose has, uh, presented to you, I think there were 17 indicated violations of that, as I understand it, most have those, if not all of them, have been rectified, that are the specific objections, that are not the, the full amount of the cosmetic complaints that she has with regard to the backyard. I have yet to see a, a finding from the fire department with regard to the cause of the fire, and exactly what did in fact occur, and how that, um, any of the problems associated with the property may have affected that, or may have caused that. With regard to the repairs that have been made, I understand that the building department in Lompoc has signed off on the major building code, uh, violations, uh, and that there are some remaining windows that are still broken. In that regard, I'd like to point out that Mr. Rampf has only owned the property for less than a year. He inherited it from his grandmother.
Okay, wrap it up, Mr. Dunlap.
Oh, I, I apologize for that, Mr. Mayor. Perhaps they, somebody will grant me their three minutes. But, uh, with regard to the, to these issues, I think that they are longstanding and much preceded the current, the current owner of the property, and we are working to get those resolved to the satisfaction of the city within, within the law of whatever he has required, you know, to do. With that, I will let the, um, public speak.
Thank you, and just, just a, just a comment. The staff did not ignore your request. That is one of our options this evening to continue this meeting. So, they did take your request, and they presented it to us as an option tonight, so thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Lynn Smith. I'm just a friend of, of the owner of the property now. Um, I'd like to, first of all, say the pictures were from a while ago, she said April, and things have been renovated and, and cleaned up pretty, pretty well, but it's still in the continuation period during that. Um, you say it's a historical house. I don't know, because of funding, because of all the things, details that are listed, if things can possibly be financially helped out from the city, or, or because of its historical society, what, what, you know, rules and regulations that are, there are regarding that, extensions of time, or anything to help out a new property owner. Um, he's young, he's not knowledgeable of a lot of ordinances and things like that, so I request, you know, we can be a little bit more considerate regarding extensions and things like that. And I'm hoping to get, um, other people along with myself to help in labor and things like paint, that people are usually disposed of anyway, so, you know, we'd be like recycling the paint, um, but just, just helping, just needed things from other people and the public understanding of a new owner, and yes, have some support from the public, you know? Okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Jeff Davis, and I am resident currently known at 215 North L. Street. Before this, I was a resident and a homeowner in Orange County. After a layoff, I lost my house, and I found myself and my family here in Lompoc. Staying in a tent in River Park. After some hard work and some luck, I'm now a resident at 215 North L. Street, and with the lot of work that I've put in this last year in that house, I have overcome all the inspection and all the codes that needed to be done, and they were verified by Dina, and my two sons are back on track now, with one of them graduated from Lompoc High School this last year. He's moved on, he's finished his first year in college, and my second son is gonna be a senior this year. He is in the top of his class, AP student. And I finally feel at this point in time that me and my family have recovered from our past, and know in the, in the last few months, things have not been really that good on the property, but once again, that's because of the loss of his grandparents, and all the responsibility being put on him has been a little bit overwhelming. So, if you could just give us a little bit more time, because in this past week, we've done a lot. If you go by and look, the house has been painted, the front yard's been cleaned, the backyard is being worked on, the trailers have been dismolded and taken out. So, if you could just give us a little bit more time, I'm sure that everything will be, I can guarantee everything will be back to order again. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations on your family's successes. Next, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Edward Henderson, better known as Scooter. I'm, uh, I'm really, I'm really angry with Ms. Foose right now, because she's, I'm the one that she spoke with, and I, I didn't disallow her never, ever to not ask. I always asked for Sterling when she arrived, okay? Like today, she came by taking pictures. How do you take pictures of something that this kid, he inherited, and he went berserk? I mean, not crazy, but he, he inherited a piece of property. So, what, I mean, you know, kids are kids, man. Um, I've been here 50 years, and, and some, all right? And I know I've been through it. So, I, I don't understand why Ms. Foose is so adamant about coming by, taking pictures of me today. I didn't ask her to take a picture of me, you know? I don't understand why you can't sit in your front yard with your friends and have a, a drink, or whatever you want, whatever you're doing. It's, there's no sense in, 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 in that, you know, her saying what we can and can't do in our own front yard. All right? I'm, I'm, I'm just saying. No, not to, I, Duane, Victor, I'm, come on now, I've known all you guys all my life. Don't, don't, I, I'm not a bad person. I'm a good person, and he is very good, and he just tries to help people. That's his problem. He tries to help too many people. Now, had they come by in the late, you know, there's nothing back there in, as far as trailers or anything like that. There's nothing. Everything is, is clean. Everything, they, they complied. He, he called them, and they would not come by to check out what needed to be done. They, they have never been over there. So, I, I don't understand and get her problem, why she wants to take somebody's property from them, because she's a fire chief? Well, how come that fire chief wasn't over there in, in record amount of time? And you're asking about putting another fire station up? Those guys, that, that fire was that big. It was little, and by the time they got there, it was exploded. And then Ms. Foose is walking through the front, not the back where it was, but she's walking through the front. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just realized that Ms. Foose is only doing her job at our direction, so, yeah, yeah, okay. Next, next, please, yeah. Thank you. Next, please.
Sterling Rampf, I'm the homeowner at 215-219-North L. Uh, for one, there was not ever a warrant served to search the property for abatements or possible fixes that needed to be done to the property. They served a, a very violent warrant on April 7th, where they battering rammed my, my front door, 150-year-old door. That house was built in 1864, and, and there was no, uh, there was no need for fire department or Steve Boggs to be walking through my property while I was being, and my friends were being taken out of our homes and the places we live, to be, uh, put on our stomachs on the front lawn in handcuffs, while they, uh, kicked in doors and destroyed my home, my grandparents' home, and they say that they did this to, do, to help the property? I don't understand, and the pictures are crazy. I've got building inspection cards, I've got the permits. I've went down the city multiple times. Everything I've had has been checked off, and graded, and approved, and signed off, and I've paid the fines and everything, and this whole thing is just crazy. I don't understand what I did to, uh, anger the, the, the powers that be, and, uh, that, I just, I'll do whatever you guys need to do. I mean, just let me know, and I've, I've complied to the fullest, and then beyond that, and, you know, I, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Well, that I would like to-
Um, I'm sorry, sir. You already had your chance. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close, close. Okay, step forward.
I don't know what you people are, but let me tell you something. Paul Rampf, I'm his father. We're not no low-life scum like you fire department, the police department calling us. When my son got that property, when after the grandmother died, we had, we hauled off seven tons, seven tons of stuff out of that yard. We've been hauling it out every since. We didn't have a problem until the city came along, raided the house, tore it up, had the gas meter taken out, had the water meter taken out, no electricity. How do you expect a man to fix his stuff if you don't have the capacity to do it? And you people sit up here and allow this to go on? This is shameful. You've got people, what, what qualifications does Dina have to be a building inspector? Has she ever had a contractor's license? Can she change a flapper valve in your toilet? We need to start finding our better, you know, better ways of doing this thing than start threatening people. I've got seven lies of the newspaper that you guys have put in, okay? So when it comes down to it, they're gonna have no place to run. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Okay, no one stepping forward, going to close public comment on this and bring it back to the city council? Okay, well, I will start, if no one else wants to. Sir, the gentleman that owns the house right now, I, I sympathize with you. I mean, I understand that you inherited this house in a terrible condition. Um, understand through our cit-, um, since Assistant City Fire Marshal, that improvements have been made, and one of the directions we have tonight, one of the options we have, is to allow you an additional 60 days to continue your, um, bringing the house up to standards. Now, we all realize, I think we realize, that the pictures we saw today from April are not the pictures we'd see today, and I commend you for that. But, none of you, I don't think any of you would think that the condition that we saw right now was acceptable for any of you to be living in it. There were some safety code violations. Um, your surrounding properties, your property owners that surround you could have been in hazard if that fire could have spread. So, so all I'm saying is that I commend you for the progress you've made. I mean, if you've, if you say you've been doing a lot of stuff, I commend you for that. Seven tons out of that property is commendable. But, the point is, there is still work that needs to be done, and that is why one of the options we have tonight, if we do this, is to allow you an additional 60 days to bring it up to code. And looking at this list, you know, there's a list of, um- 18 problems. You know, I think with the you and some of your friends, I believe you can get it done, so. So, so anyway, um, those are my comments. Any other from, from the city council? Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, when you talk about you need water and electricity, it usually makes it different you pay your bill.
Okay, wait, this is not a question-and-answer period. Um, okay. Okay, is that your comment, Councilmember Humdol? Okay, anyone else? Councilmember Mosby.
Can somebody answer too, from the city, why the utilities were cut off? Water, electric?
The electricity and the gas was turned off at the time of the inspection due to the number of fire code violations and electrical hazards. They were ignition sources and sources of fuel, so we had grave concern that that would cause a fire in the future. So we did a lockout, tag-out as standard procedure. If we find something substandard, where we have to post it unsafe to occupy, which we did. The water was a later development. That was at the time of the fire. On May 3rd, we had, it actually went up May 4th, because we had to wait for the lights to come on, the sun to come up, and one of our officials from the water, water department saw the waste, come out and determined that they did not have a gray water permit, and the pipes coming straight out from where the main house kitchen, that was discharging the water, uh, right onto the ground, and in conjunction with the shed, converted to a bathroom, and we didn't know if it was actually going in the sewer. It was deemed that the water was a hazard. We've since gotten permits, clarified that, worked with the owner. That has all been reconciled. What we didn't know was there was maybe a balance before that could be turned back on. So, we've actually cleared the water to be turned back on. It's back on the other side now. Any other questions?
How far away is electricity from being turned back on?
Soon as we can get the building official, which actually declares things unsafe as far as the building, not that, not myself, um, once those are deemed safe, as the electrical hazards have been abated, then we can get power and gas turned back on.
Okay.
It's a source of ignition.
Dina, don't re, I mean, yeah, don't re, oh, yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Dina. We're gonna bring it back to the council for discussion and recommendation. Now, Dina, I have one quick question for you. Your staff recommendation, staff recommendation is recommendation three. Is that correct? Okay, and that would allow, if, if that were to pass, that would allow them 30 days to make any necessary repairs? Six, I'm sorry, 60 days, yes, 60 days.
That would allow for the owner or his friends to do 60 days of diligence to voluntarily bring it back into where it needs to be. We're happy, if you call the inspection line, to come out there, like we do with anybody that calls the inspection line prior to 7:00 AM, we will come out and do an inspection, so we can kind of go checking down that list. Where, we'll work down whatever we need to. That's, that's what the building department does.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say, you're, you're, that means this list is what you, you're talking about that you have here.
That's the, the municipal code list, yes.
Councilmember Vega.
Uh, Dina, it looks like they've made a lot of progress here. Um, so, it seems like they could probably move forward with the cleanup if, if we could get to a point where utilities were all turned on. Is that correct? I mean, are we really that close to getting electricity on now, or?
Uh, we haven't been invited for an inspection to verify some of the correction work that needed to be done. So we'd have to actually get our building inspector over there, and the building official would make that determination, if it's safe to energize the building, just like we would do with any other standard shut-off. So, they have been doing work there. We have not been invited back, so I don't have current pictures, so I can't see exactly what's going on, but 60 days is a fairly reasonable amount of time to get that done.
Now, the, the repairs that are deemed necessary, are they gonna require electricity or for anything that you know of? I mean, as far as-
They, they do have power to the other house. There was power to 215. It wasn't taken away from both, so there was some power movement going on with utilities. Um, the, the course of the house did have serious concerns for electrical hazards, and of which that hasn't even been ruled out as one of the causes, possible causes for that fire. So, we would still need to get a professional sign-off by building to say it was safe to energize that building.
Okay, and I, I guess, you know, the fear factor is you're worried about the safety of whoever goes in there, so basically, something needs to happen to alleviate your, the fear factor as far as from fire department and PD also, to be invited back for a re-inspect. Is that correct, or are you guys gonna need an escort to go in there?
Uh, the, the last inspection to clear the plumbing did not have an escort with the final plumbing sign-off. The building inspector was allowed- The building inspector was allowed access to the property without incident, so we deemed that safe.
Thank you. Okay, so any other-
Plumbing.
Comments from the council? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I think what they've come up with has been real good, and I can go with the 60-day extension only if they'll invite them in and let them in on the property to do the inspection.
Never been a problem.
Okay. Okay, excuse me. Okay, so Councilmember Hamdul, you're, you're making a motion for staff recommendation of number three.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a second? Number three is, okay, so the recommendation is to adopt resolution 599, parentheses 15, declaring a public nuisance, and then authorizing abatement after the 60 days. They're gonna allow them 60 days to remedy these nine items. Is that correct, Deana? No, I believe it is, yes.
I'd like a clarification, okay, that they will have the opportunity to stop the remainder of that process since they've made progress moving forward. I want to make sure that we're not gonna just fast forward and put these guys in more of jeopardy.
Deana, would you step forward again? So the question is-
If I may, through the mayor.
Sure.
What the resolution is saying is you won't be authorizing staff to go forward with the abatement until that 60 days passes. And only, the abatement can only go forward if they haven't corrected all the things that had to be corrected in those 60 days. If that doesn't happen, if they aren't corrected, then you've authorized the staff to start the process to do the abatement. And as the city prosecutor said, one of those processes includes, we have to go back to court to go, to get the authority from the court to enter the property to do the abatement.
Okay, I guess my, my next question is, is aimed at the homeowners to make sure, see if they have the resources actually to do this and the intent is to comply with this because it is gonna cost probably a little bit of money. So I'd like to, to be fair, I'd like to ask, do they have the resources to complete this? You know?
It's never been a problem.
Okay, so, okay, we're, we're gonna, we're, no, we're, we're not gonna take any more public comment on this, okay?
Was that, was the councilman asking this, I think the councilman was asking for input from the property owner whether or not there was-
Okay, go ahead.
I think my client may be premature, my client may be premature in his optimism about financing being available because of the nature of the, of the property itself and the fact that it doesn't have the utilities. We're working on getting funding for it. I do notice that you do have programs available and there are other, the State Historical Society has grant funds available for some of these things. But cash money-wise, it's very questionable, particularly with the state of the property now not being available for occupancy because of the no-water conditions. So that's why I was asking for this, for additional time to explore the options available for rehabilitation of the property to the standards. They have made the necessary building department or fire department complaint corrections. However, whether or not they will meet all of the necessary code upgrades, if there are, to the extent that they have to do that, is may take funding beyond their ability.
Mr. Mayor, I think the question is just on whether or not there was financing available.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Starbuck, or Councilmember Vega, did you finish?
I was just, that was my question.
Okay, good. Councilmember Starbuck, did you second, or?
I was going to. I'll second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. What's it? Okay, you know exactly what it is, okay. Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Okay, we're gonna go on to new business. And just for everyone's information, we, tonight, we're going to pull item number There was a little bit of a delay on this, so we're gonna pull item number seven for a future council meeting. Okay, we're gonna open up with new business item number six, which is adoption of resolution 5998, parentheses 15, authorizing the city administrator to amend the city's personnel procedures allowing for paid organ and bone marrow transplant donation leave. And this is by Gabriel Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, audience, and our members at home. I'm here to present the resolution, hopefully that the council will, will adopt tonight. And this is for, to allow for paid leave for organ donation and bone marrow donation. What we're asking is that, is that the city council allow us to follow a state law that's there for state employers and public sector employers that allow for up to 30 paid days off for bone marrow. It's five days for bone marrow and 30 days for an organ transplant. We believe that this is definitely beneficial to our employees if they, if there is a medical necessity for them to be able to donate an organ or donate bone marrow. So that's what we're asking, that the council allow this resolution to be passed so that we can adopt that. In my experience, this is the first time that I've encountered this, so I don't believe that it's gonna be one that we're gonna see often. But if we do see it, that means that somebody is get, is receiving an organ or bone marrow and potentially saving a life. So I think it's important. I think it's great for our city to do that. There are a few cities that are, that are encountering this, and I'm glad that we have also. So with that, I have any questions, any questions I can answer?
Mr. Garcia, I think you mentioned that it's a benefit to our employees, but I'd like to add it's a benefit to the public as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, general public as well as family members, okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
What happens if it's one of our employees that needs bone marrow or an organ donation? The same applies in reverse to them, or do they get a greater period of time?
They get, they get FMLA leave. There's catastrophic leave that we have. But as far as this, this current state law is if someone was, that worked for a state employer or a private sector employer that has this, or that's, that's required to provide that leave, they would be afforded that same leave.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to, unless there's any more questions-
Oh, wait, we need public comment. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we're gonna open this up for public comment on this item. Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close public comment and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Vega.
Okay, now I'd like to make the motion that we adopt that resolution and move forward with that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I think this is a great step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
We're skipping number seven. We're gonna move on to number eight, which is recommend change in the title, job titles, introducing an ordinance number 1614, parentheses 15. This is city administrator Patrick Y. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. I am bringing to you a recommendation of a job title, happens to be involving two job titles, one being mine and one of assistant city administrator position. And what we're recommending to you is to prove a cha, just a change in a job title from city administrator to city manager and the job title of assistant city administrator to assistant city manager. And as you just stated, that would include an introduction of ordinance 1614, parentheses 15, by first reading. Before I get into the content of the reasons behind the request, I did want to read in the record, we have a slight change on the draft that was provided when we posted the agenda, a slight change to the ordinance. Because we had some language that reflected the former organizational structure, and we just want to make sure that this reflects the current organizational structure. So in, in the ordinance itself, if you were to look on that first page and look down at number seven, it reads on the draft, the recreation functions of Parks Recreation and Urban Forestry Department, it will be deemed to refer to the, and it says city administration. That should, we'll do some changing to read to the economic and community development for, for recreation and to public works for parks and urban forestry. And then likewise, on page two, the item number eight, that says recreation refers to the director of Parks Recreation and Urban Forestry Department should be deemed to refer to, again, the same appropriate folks, either the economic development director and assistant city manager or public works director as fitting. Now, back to the topic at hand. Job title of city manager is the most commonly used job title for the position within a municipality that serves as chief executive officer and the ranking member for the organization, including oversight of executive positions, specifically department heads. Here in the city of Lompoc, we use the job title currently of city administrator, and we've used that historically to identify this same position. While the terms city manager and city administrator are used interchangeably in a lot of settings, there actually is a technical difference in, with many locations. And so, and, and the reason this is even being brought up is that occasionally, as a result of that technical difference, we usually don't encounter, I've never encountered any problems at all with one title or the other internally, has more to do with external partners, with people that we deal with who are sometimes confused. Maybe they're used to working, when they come to a city to work with city officials, they're used to having contact with a city manager and are, or because they do understand the difference, ask whether they should be dealing with council rather than on some things where they should be dealing with the city manager. So that's, that's the purpose why we're bringing that. I want to explain a little bit about that technical difference that exists, both, you know, here in California and across a lot of the country. The difference is normally, classically, that the city manager has the authority to hire, in addition to all those other responsibilities that either a city manager or a city administrator would have, the city manager has the authority to hire, review, discipline, and terminate department heads. While, again, in, classically, in cities with the city administrators, the city council holds that responsibility and authority. Also, and sometimes city administrator is used in cities, although not in all cities, that have a strong mayor form of government. Here in Lompoc, we do not have a strong mayor form of government, sorry, Mayor Lingle, but rather we have a council manager form of government. And in a council manager form of government such as this one, the city administrator or the city manager serves as the chief executive officer. The title of city administrator is currently being used and has historically been used. But indeed, here, we use administrator as the term referring to the chief executive officer who does have responsibility over department heads and all staff. In that sense, the city administrator does serve as a city manager in its truest sense here in Lompoc. It's also worth noting that in Santa Barbara County, we have eight cities, and currently five of those cities use the city manager title. Three of the cities, besides Lompoc, also Santa Barbara and Guadalupe, use the city administrator title. I would point out, in the other two cities, Santa Barbara and Guadalupe, that use city administrator, they actually have true city administrators, wherein the city council has total or partial hiring, review, discipline, and termination authority over their department heads. In Santa Barbara County, only Lompoc empowers their city administrator in the same manner as cities with a city manager title. I believe that the city council may have already seen the need to clarify the responsibilities of the city administrator and to clarify this intention to have this position serve as city manager. City council approved the current city administrator's employment agreement with language that includes a section titled laws affecting title. And there it reads, and I'll read it verbatim, "In addition to those laws affecting a city administrator, employee shall have the same powers, rights, and responsibilities as a chief executive officer, chief administrative officer, or city manager as those terms are used in local, state, and federal laws." There are- state, and federal laws." There are several places in the Lompoc municipal code and other city documents referencing the title of city administrator, and based on that, modifying section 1.04.025 of the Lompoc municipal code is the most expeditious manner to facilitate this title change that is being suggested. I would point out, there's no fiscal impact contemplated with this. The only potential cost would be reprinting of things like stationary business cards, and our plan is not to go out and immediately reprint anything. We'd only wait until we exhaust our current supplies and re, in the normal order of reordering, change titles on those sorts of printed materials. Other than that, we, we just, we're not contemplating costs with it. I do wanna be clear that the current use of title, city administrator, does not pose any legal liability or practical problems for the city. We'd, we'd be all right to continue on with city administrator. There's no real harm being done because of that title. My recommendation, our recommendation, to sit, to change that to city manager and assistant city manager is recommended only to create improved understanding for external parties, and I'd say particularly when we are trying to woo businesses into the city. I would, I also wanna be clear, there is no change in authority whatsoever being given to the position. It is purely a title change to the exclusion of all other potential outcomes to this request. So with that, I submit that for your consideration.
Councilmember Mosby.
I just wanna ask you a couple of questions for clarification. You did nail some of them. We did talk earlier about this. The change has no increase in, in wage?
No.
There's none in the, in the near future plan by changing a title for increase of wage?
No, I'm currently under a multi-year contract, and this does not change any of that.
And again, this doesn't give any increase in your job duties?
No. In fact, for clarity's sake, what I'm suggesting is a change, the change of title would more accurately depict the duties and responsibilities and authority that are currently in place, more than city administrator does. But there's no change to those duties, responsibilities, and authorities. That's why it's just the title change.
And historically, we were, we were talking about when this possibly happened, because the city of Lompoc did start off with an administrator, and sometimes in the thirties or forties or fifties, things had been transitioning over without the name change following. And then likewise, in sixty, seventies, eighties, it even went more towards a manager, still keeping the title of administrator. Is that, is that kind of, did you find anything new?
Well, I wasn't able to find in any, in the research I did, anything that, that would able to pin that down with certainty. But certainly intuitively, as I look at the process of the city, that would be true. I believe they probably did start, that remembering at one point, there was no city manager, city administrator, when there was a city council, and basically, city council in aggregate acted in that capacity in overseeing day-to-day operations, appointing department heads, and all of that. At one point or another came a time, and I think it was, I'd been back in the forties or something like that, maybe early fifties, where it was recognized the need to have a professional, if you will, who would be in that place and could give their full time and attention to that function. As they established that, that may be where, where the administrator was established, and it may well be because we were in this transition point, that while we're given day-to-day administrative responsibility over to this individual, council may have for a time held on to some of those responsibilities. But over time, and the adoption of any number of code, of municipal code items, it's clear that, that, those, that level of authority and responsibility has been empowered to the city, to the city administrator, that, that of what's classically called a city manager role.
So the administrator transitioned into a manager without the title moving forward?
As, as best I can tell, we, yeah, we strengthened the position, never adjusted the title.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosby. Those are the questions that I think most of us had on our checklist as well. Those are the things that we've, so any other questions for the city administrator? Okay, bring it up to public comment, or open up to public comment. Anyone want to discuss this? Seeing no one rise, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Humdol.
I'll go ahead and move introduction of ordinance number 1613-15, amending the various provisions of Slumpo Municipal Code relating to the distribution recommendation.
Staff recommendation.
1614, 1614 (15).
I got the wrong one. Yeah, I was up too high.
Okay. Okay, is that clear, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're, he's made a motion to approve staff recommendations. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, it appears as though it's really just semantics is what we're doing, so I'll go ahead and second it here.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's vote. That passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now going to move on to item number nine, introduction of ordinance number 1613 (15), amending various provisions of the Lompoc Municipal Code relating to disestablishment and reconstitution of the Lompoc Public Library. This is city administrator.
Thank you again, Mayor. What we recommend for you tonight is introduction of the ordinance that would amend various provisions within the Lompoc Municipal Code relating to the, both the disestablishment and then the reconstitution of the Lompoc Library as an official department of the city. There's a long history with our library, and it dates back quite a ways. We can, we can go back to the establishment of the library as far back as in 1907. It was a follow-up to, to a personal petition that was brought forth by the Harmony Club, later known as the Alpha Club, and to the Board of Trustees for what was then the town of Lompoc, and now the, the city council of the city of Lompoc. And they adopted ordinance 128, establishing the Lompoc Public Library for the city. It's, it's real important to note at this point that all of our research, that's, that's the best research and evidence we have available about the formation of the library is this action that was an adoption of an ordinance. Our thorough research of both city and library records revealed no records of that ordinance having been adopted in response to a request to, from one-fourth of the electors of the city, which would have been the provision set forth within the California election code. In other words, we don't have evidence saying it was formed by an election of the electorate, and therefore, that, that, such a finding would have had us, if we had that evidence, we'd be going a different path here, in that we would need to be going for an election for something that was created by election. We can, we, we would transition by election. Here, if it's created by legislation, this ordinance, therefore, we can transition via legislation. Since its official coronation in 1907, the library has administered, and to some degree, degree has already been functioning as a department of the city of Lompoc, supporting the library needs within the community, and a lot of that being done through the funding, either through the city's general fund or the city's community development block grants on various library projects. In addition to the actual dollars, the city's been providing financial and other assistance through library oversight, administrative and human services support, and that includes but not limited to payroll, the provision of benefits, workers' compensation coverage, employee, employer relations, financial reporting, in addition to providing the library building itself. Currently, the library's been governed by a library board of trustees that's been making and enforcing all the rules, regulation, and bylaws necessary for the administration, governance, and operation of the library, including making, having oversight of personnel decisions. For me personally, that was one of the challenges and one of the first identifications I made of what I thought was a need to do one of two things, either transition this library into becoming a full department, or maybe more formalizing the distance between the two. Just one small example of that, and I'd mentioned, we provide coverage for the library workers on our, on our worker compensation insurance, and I review the experience on an ongoing basis, but particularly when we do an, an annual review that's setting what our cost of insurance is and setting the experience modification. Normally, I look at that pretty close, because if we have experience going on in any work area where we start seeing the same job classifications of the same location of work or type of work being done, where we're seeing repetitive injuries, then I'm, I'm taking some pretty strong-armed action to give direction as to do things to adapt the ergonomics of a work area, or to provide safety training, or provide protective equipment and clothing, whatever it would take to help address that issue. Here, where I can see some repetitive issues going on in the library, I was in no position to be able to improve the experience that they were having there. And it was just one minor example. That repeated itself many times over. It's important to note that the library historically has, for some amount of time, has, the, the board of trustees have been overseeing not only the Lompoc Library, but two other branches, one in Bulton and one in Vandenberg Village, which are part of the county, and they were doing this through cooperative services agreement. Because of a recent change, moving Bulton out of the zone here that is included with Lompoc and, and Vandenberg Village, and moving them to, to the zone to the east that combines them with Santa Barbara and with Solvang and the like, from this point forward, we would, our, our operation would still just be providing then for services for, in Lompoc and for, you know, contracting with the county to provide for Vandenberg Village. But due to the majority of the funding being provided by the city, it is imperative for the city to establish oversight for the organization, for the operations of the library, at least in my opinion. That's why we were recommending to you that, that we would take this action. We had also previously, in leading up to this, had presented our thoughts and theories to the library board of trustees, because really, it was less that we were trying to make demands, more that we were being, giving clear options, feeling like we couldn't stay where we were, it either had to move one direction or another. And the, the decision of the library board of trustees was to support staff's proposal as well. To my knowledge, no public objections have been received in terms of the disestablishment and reconstitution of the library to become fully incorporated as part of the city's organizational structure. As we worked our way through the budget process, as you're well aware, it's not too long ago, we developed that with the intention of having it operate within the city's budgetary process in a, in a way, it's, looks quite a bit different than what we have in the past. I think establishing the library as a city department is vital to the existence of the library itself because of the current situation of no state funding and increasing reliance on the general fund resources for operation. I also think with the adoption you've done of the current budget cycle, I think we've really shown and demonstrated we as a city are putting our money where our mouth is in terms of increasing our support for the library at the same time, and being interested in putting in performance measures and the like for how we wanna see it perform. We've reestablished the, the, the job descriptions, job classifications, and staffing configuration to try to encourage and develop a more professional, career-oriented career path for those engaging in library services and library, library science. As I said, we've, we've stepped up and really shown our commitment. The adoption of the general fund support for the library for the current budget cycle that's just begun compared to the previous two years is an increase of over a third of a million dollars, about $334,000. I would point out, in contrast, support from all other agencies grew by less than $82,000 for that same time period. So, for all these factors, our recommendation is that you would approve and embrace this initial reading of this ordinance, and if adopted, we'll bring it back for a final reading at the next council meeting on July 21st. And with that, I submit that for your consideration.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay, we're gonna, Councilmember Mosby.
I had a question in here. When you look at the page three or four here, and you have a chart in here?
Yes.
And it shows the Lompoc contributions, the 500 down there for 1516 and 1617 budgeted?
Yes.
And when you go to the budget book, in the budget book here, of course, you probably don't have it with you, but you probably memorized it, I'm sure.
Nope.
Anyhow, in here on the library, it shows that you had a 1.57 million, and in here, those two numbers here don't come up to that.
Yeah, I think what we're reflecting here is, on the report, is the money coming out of the general fund as opposed to out of funds of all sources. There are other, there are other funds that come along for the operations.
Well, 'cause I, just looking at the budget book, it says transfers from general fund, 1.57, and then, so I'm trying it to be significantly higher in the, in the budget, in the, the budget itself, or the?
I, I don't know what you're looking at, sir. I don't, I don't have it memorized, and I don't have a copy of the budget in front of me.
I know you do. Well, just, there, there shows to be discrepancy. I'm not sure what, why it shows that, so.
Well, I don't know if Mr. Wilkie's in the building. If he's listening, maybe he'll come up and help clarify that within the next, within the next two minutes.
Click his heels. He'll be here.
Okay, let's, if there's nothing else, let's go to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the council, and Mr. Wilkie will hopefully be able to address that. So, I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Anyone that would like to discuss this?
My name is Elizabeth Chapman. I've lived in this town for 33 years. Before I get to my preparatory comments, I'd just like to say that I very strongly believe in the importance of libraries and the community services that they provide, and the separation of myself from a job that I loved and a work that I believed in has been heartbreaking for me. I come before you this evening to ask that you delay the vote to accept the Lompoc Library System as an official city department until the claims of age discrimination and denial of seniority rights to employees recently terminated from the library are resolved. Until I was laid off on June 13th due to, quote, "organizational restructuring", unquote, I was a library employee for the last 19 years. I was required to follow all city of Lompoc employee policies and procedures. I was held to the city's hiring, evaluation, and promotional practices. And for the last seven and a half years as a full-time employee, participated in the medical and dental insurances provided through the city and contributed to purse. I believe that I have a right to the same treatment as every other city of Lompoc employee. As stated in the city of Lompoc Municipal Code, Section 2.64.100, Paragraphs 1 and 2 concerning abolishment of positions, employees transferred, demoted, or laid off because of the abolishment of positions of positions shall not be subject to written charges, nor shall have the right of appeal in such cases. Seniority shall be observed in effecting such reductions in personnel, and the order of layoff shall be in the reverse order of total cumulative time with the city, and shall include time served on military leave of absence, unquote. The failure of the library director Jessica Cadiante, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Human Resources Manager to follow the City of Lompoc's Municipal Code constitutes illegal personnel practices and discrimination. I request an immediate investigation of the entire layoff process, and request a hearing before the Personnel Appeals Board as required by city ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Sheri Weda. Thank you for the opportunity to address you with this issue that is important to me. I have been employed by the City of Lompoc for the last 18 years, working at Bulton Library. I love this job, serving my community, and then I, along with the rest of the Bulton Library staff, received a certified letter informing me of my termination from the city, effective June 13 this year. The letter stated that because my current job classification was going to be eliminated, my services were no longer, would no longer be required, and I would be separated from the city. I was told to return my keys and my badge to the library, and that I would receive information from HR regarding my retirement funds. This letter was signed by Jessica Cadiante, the, the Lompoc Library Director. I have since discovered that according to the Lompoc City Code Ordinance 848, Section 2011, I should have been offered a position at another branch due to my seniority, and have my name placed on a reemployment list for one year, Rule 7, Section 3. According to Rule 13, Section 2, the department head should have notified the personnel officer of the intended layoffs and given us statements certifying whether or not our service had been satisfactory. If indeed the city policy was violated, then my rights were violated. I hereby request a hearing and investigation by the Personnel Appeals Board. I intend to exercise all my rights, both administrative and legal, because a seniority analysis was not done on our behalf. Just prior to receiving our letters of termination, Lompoc Director Jessica Cadiante informed us that we could reapply for positions with the City of Lompoc or Santa Barbara. She then left her position as Library Director of Lompoc and took a managerial one at Santa Barbara Library, under Irene Macias, Santa Barbara Library Director. I applied for the new positions and came to understand from Irene herself that I had passed the two interviews by the three-person panel. Several days after those interviews took place, I received a call at my home from Irene, asking if I still wanted the position, then to come meet her for a private interview. But then, excuse me. And I received a call at home from Irene, asking if I still wanted the position, then to come meet her for a private interview, addressing some concerns she had. Still wanting the position, I of course consented to this interview, but then was subjected by her to a 45-minute grilling, full of accusations, without letup. I responded meekly, honestly, respectfully, and broke out in tears due to the intense tone of her interrogation.
Go ahead, go ahead and continue.
Five days later, she called to inform me that all the slots for the positions were filled and I would not be hired. When asked why, Irene replied that she had information. The very person who is responsible for allegedly violating my rights of seniority by her own method of layoffs was hired by and works beside the person who refused to hire me. Please postpone any changes in the Municipal Code in relation to the Lompoc Public Library until this matter is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Adam Fabello. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I've been employed with the City of Lompoc for almost 15 years, until I was laid off June 13th, due to the elimination of the library computer technician position as part of the preparation to include the library as a city department. The City of Lompoc's Municipal Code states that when a position is abolished, seniority shall be observed in effecting such reductions, and the order of layoff shall be reversed. You've heard this already. Do you want me to continue? Thank you. During my years of working in the library, I was required to conform to all City Lompoc employee policies and procedures, which included mandatory employee training. Also during that time, I was, the entire time, I was the library safety representative to the Safety Council. I believe I'm entitled to the same seniority rights as other City of Lompoc employees. Seniority wasn't offered after the elimination of my position. I request a hearing before the Personnel Boards of Appeal and an investigation into the layoff process as it was applied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is John Dorwin. I have maintained a law practice in Bulton, California, for the last 29 years. I have been a patron of the library which you administered and supported in Bulton for about the last 20 years. I was adversely affected by your recent closure and transfer of that facility to the Santa Barbara main branch, library. I urge you to delay adoption of any library ordinance until the Personnel Appeals Process has been conducted. I would ask you to review the potential liability that you're looking at from three obvious wrongful terminations that you have just heard about. I would ask that you not proceed to ratify illegal personnel actions in violation of your own city personnel code and policies. Your personnel ordinance is explicit, you need to follow it. The problem here that I see is there was a perceptual problem. The perceptual problem was, library employees are not city employees. My understanding, based upon who paid them, who provided their services, who provided their HR management, their workers' compensation, all the issues addressed by the city manager, they were first and foremost, city employees of Lompoc entitled to the policy protections of the city personnel ordinance. Moving forward without addressing the illegal personnel actions would be a due process violation and a bill of attainder, i.e. a trial by you as legislative action, and it would submit, it would potentially involve you in ratifying civil rights violations. Don't make this situation worse by moving forward this evening. Table the reorganization process until the Personnel Appeals Board has had a chance to run its course. These three individuals were wrongfully terminated without any analysis as to seniority, rehiring, or their rights to equal protection and due process under your policy. That takes this whole situation from at-will employment to wrongful termination.
Can you finish up in the next 20, 30 seconds?
I would urge you to meet with your staff council before you take any action, any further action on this matter this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
John Lynn, Lompoc resident. And I certainly couldn't address the personnel issues, but I do have a concern, and it's kind of what Councilmember Mosby talked about. In the 1315 budget, we gave the city from the city's general fund $836,391. In the 1517 budget, according to the staff report you have in front of you, we gave them $1.170 million. Except in the budget document, which you all agreed to, it shows $1.572 million as a transfer from the general fund. So I don't really know what number's right. If it was, went from 800 to 1.17, that's about a 50% increase. If it went from 836 to 1.572, that's in the budget, that would be an 88% increase. And that didn't get us one more hour of the library being open. It didn't deliver any additional services, and it took a great deal of money out of the city general fund, and by the way, it's a number fairly equal to the amount that you're in deficit. So I kind of doubt anyone has said to you, let's spend another $700,000 on the library and not add any hours, but I suspect a lot of people have said to you, why don't we fix our parks? So if we're gonna spend $736,000, let's see if we can get something out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Let's all take a deep breath. I'm Barry Marks, I'm Secretary to the Board of Trustees of the Lompoc Public Library System. And the dilemma presented to you tonight was clearly defined by City Manager Wyman. The employees, as I understand it, were employees of the library, not of the city. We established and highly scrutinized the director on her change of job classifications from what they were to clear career paths, because libraries are not the libraries we went to. More than half of the library services offered are technological, and now the goal is for any patron to come up to any worker and have any question answered. It is my understanding, and former Director Cadiante was grilled extensively by the board, that then-current workers had the options to begin training and education. She provided sources, many of which were online, and available and accessible. We were told by her, so that's hearsay, I guess, but we were told by her, none stepped forward to take advantage of these opportunities. I say this because we are very strong and vigilant in this. We did not take the possibility of a termination lightly or cavalierly. It's very serious to us, we, we're members of the same community. So I want you to know, we did exercise, as, take Chief Lapato and Fire Marshal Fuss's terms, due diligence in looking forward in a very stepwise form, and offering the opportunity for those not participating to put their hat in the ring. And to my knowledge, they chose not to. So one of the things that I, as a board member, am grateful for is the city considering clearing up these gray zones, so we can have clear lines of communication, clear lines of expectations, and performance management. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Next, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to his comments.
State your name.
Sorry, Pamela Peterson. I used to work for the Lompoc Public Library System in Bulton and, and Lompoc for a number of years, and then we got, well, I didn't technically get a termination notice, because it basically never got picked up. But responding to his issue about Jessica and notification about employment, or teaching abilities, or even the opportunity to reapply, that was not forthcoming at all. Basically, I'm kind of a little bit insulted by the city manager and his comments to the Santa Barbara news press a couple months ago, saying that basically those of us who were gonna be laid off were not gonna be experienced or educated enough to reapply for the new positions. This did not take into account number of years that we had served, nor those of us who have multiple degrees. It wasn't taken into consideration in terms of employment, once we were all laid off either. Nobody asked as what type of degrees we had, or if they were compensable to what, to the current employers who had less experience, maintain their jobs. And so I'd like you to oppose it for now, I'd like you to take into consideration that all of us had issues in terms of our termination, in terms of it being illegal. Even the Human Resources for Lompoc, when I asked when our checks were gonna be given to us, they responded with a manual from the City of Lompoc of why we weren't gonna be paid on our last day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Whitney Weda, and I'm a resident of Bulton, and I would like to just kind of clarify something. I, I am the husband of an employee that was terminated from the Lompoc Library System. And one thing you have to understand is, back when the director before Jessica Cadiante was Ms. Chavez, had come down, and of course, this is gonna be hearsay, but told the employees of Bulton that they would be elevated to the library assistants, because they are classified as library clerks, but they are doing the work as a library assistant. Now, this doesn't take any additional training that was mentioned by, excuse me, but I don't remember your name, but the, the matter of the fact is, he was stating that there was one portion where there would be either retraining or additional education to be had, and I believe that was for a master's degree for the children's librarian, and that individual was terminated because she is, husband had passed away, and she's taking care of two teenage daughters. She didn't have the time to go back to school and get her masters. But in, in the instance for the library clerks that were at Bulton, there was no additional training that would be needed, so there, that would be the reason that they would not come forward and ask for it. If they were already doing the job for the, the reclassification that is going to be assigned, there is no additional training needed. They were already doing the work above their current job classification. So I, I believe some of the statements were made were a little bit misleading, as far as the individuals not coming forward and asking for the additional training. None was required. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close public comment on this, bring it back to the council. Before we start, I would like to address a question to the city attorney. Personnel issues are something that we really don't want to discuss in public, so sort of give us some guidance on our questions we're going to, if we have any questions concerning this.
Should I make it in and say, don't ask any questions?
Well, no, I mean, I realize we don't want to discuss a lot of personnel issues in public, so.
I, I think maybe, what may be the assistance to you is to remember what's on the agenda. What's on the agenda is the disestablishment of the library and the establishment as part of the city organization. That really is a separate issue from any alleged personnel matters that occurred. Making this change won't lessen or heighten, if there were personnel, I'm not saying there were, if there were any personnel concerns, the action you're taking tonight won't increase the liability of the city, or limit the liability of the city in any way. It's, it's sort of a, a separate action.
Okay. City manager?
And the city attorney basically made that point, is that the, the requests that you were hearing about changing, you know, or holding up your action, really doesn't influence, they are two separate bodies and issues. I would point out, maybe I'm stating the obvious, but I don't publish the Santa Barbara Press, or any other newspaper for that matter, and recognizing, I, I didn't make the statement that was attributed to me, and I don't, I don't know whether it was printed that way or not, I don't read the newspaper for reasons that generally quotes are incorrect, and I wouldn't have the blood pressure to, to be able to hold up too well under reading a lot of those things, so, anyway. Again, we stand by our, our recommendation. I, I think overall...
I think, overall, I would tell you, the steps we've been taking have been to hopefully fortify and bring about better library service to the community. That's why we're, we've enhanced the city's commitment to funding of the programs. And, you know, that's, that's what our end focus in all of this is, how do we bring about a better service to the community, and can we do that, you know, reconfiguring? I also just wanted to remind that as part of this, there would be establishment of a library commission, take the place of the library board of trustees. I've encouraged, you have encouraged them, for continuity in that regard, to be able to continue on with that, that level of operation and policy oversight, because definitely the board of trustees has valuable input to be given. And this isn't a situation where we're trying to change the heart of the library at all. We just, we want to enhance, particularly personally, I'd say my, my, my personal vision and focus is particularly on enhancing preschool-level programming that we can reach out, because I do believe, as I've stated before, if we can get our kids kicked off and do our part to work with organizations like First Five of Santa Barbara County and with the Lompoc Unified School District, I believe we can set people off, we can set our kids off to a lifetime of learning. That ultimately, that's an investment we make now for twenty years down the road as to having, you know, higher levels of education throughout the community, and people that are more, you know, a citizenry that's that much more employable and therefore to help us with our unemployment issues. I know that's a long-term investment, a long time to wait for the return on investment, but I think a vital one. So I just wanted to make those clarifications, and still, in light of all the statements you've heard, I would still recommend you're embracing this introduction of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Oh, and I think I'll, uh, Mr. Wilkie's here.
Yes, I just.
To maybe respond to the.
Yes, before he does, I just have one more question for the city attorney, since he told me not to ask questions. Keep me out of trouble. I realize your statement saying that if we take the action that we're being requested to take tonight, it would not affect, it would not take into effect, I mean, would not alter.
It wouldn't increase or decrease.
Increase or decrease, okay. So would it be appropriate to, since we have, well, either the city manager or the human services director here, just that we know, or we can ask the question, have these concerns been addressed? Is that stepping off, over bounds, over bounds?
I'd like to answer that question.
Sure, go ahead. Because I think we'd like to know, have the issues been addressed?
As you know, everything in legal issues is about interpretation, and so there may be those that interpret actions and words differently than I do. But in my review today, actually, with the human resources manager, the process that was used and the rules that apply, and I also think it's safe for us to say that the rules that apply are the city's personnel rules, because that's historically what we've applied, even though they aren't actually technically city employees. And even with all that, the process that was followed was the proper, was a proper process.
Thank you. Okay. First, before we bring it back to council, Mr. Wilkie, if you could address Councilmember Mosby's question.
Certainly. Thank you. Sorry, I was in the back trying to answer one of your other questions from earlier, but I haven't gotten that one done yet. As you know, the, the document that was presented on June second, the draft document for the budget, was the beginning of a process. Between June second and June twenty-third, we went through several sessions to address the deficit that was proposed in that original draft. Three things occurred that reduced the amount that was required to come from the general fund to provide for the library services. One is that we got revised information from the county about their contribution, which was somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty, ninety thousand dollars additional money. And we identified some of the capital projects that the library board had already approved to be done prior to the budget year out of their own reserves. We found some ways to reassign them, one of which, for example, is eligible for our CDBG project. So we suggested that we put that in possibly as a CDBG project for the next fiscal year. The original draft budget included all the capital projects, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to come from general fund reserves to pay for those projects. But we had already been assigning those projects to library reserves. We were, for lack of a better term, double counting it, so we could reduce the contribution from the general fund for those amounts on a one-to-one basis. So we roughly reduced it four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of those changes, helping to reduce the deficit that the general fund had from the beginning June second budget to when it was adopted.
Councilmember Mosby, does that answer your question?
Well, to finalize that statement, then you can, you can verify that these are the, the amounts in the staff report are the correct amounts?
Yes, the ma, the amounts that are in the staff report are based on the BBR that we have, that included all the changes that were adopted by council during the several sessions we had in June, getting to the point where we could adopt the budget. So the, these numbers are based on that ending approved budget number.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
I just wanted to thank you for coming out of his dungeon and coming out here to give you the answer. Thank you.
Bring it back to the council. Any other questions for Mr. Wyman Miller? Seeing no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion we move forward with staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please vote. That passes five-zero. Councilmember Humdol, did you have a comment?
Nothing particularly to this, but it's to the Harmony Club and the Alpha Club. A lot of people don't realize it was the Harmony Club, Alpha Club, which brought the library to Lompoc, got the building over here and gone in there. And that was a major component. Then they also had the library books they put in there to have a library. So it wasn't just a simple deal they did. That's how the Alpha Club did that back in, there's Harmony now Alpha Club. And my mother told me all that stuff, too.
Thank you. Okay, before we can move on to number ten, I know you're trying to turn the heat up on this council. Do we have the air conditioner running? Okay. Okay.
Oh, a wide door.
What's that? It's warm. Okay. Let's move on to item number ten. Item number ten is a City of Lompoc zoning ordinance comprehensive update, and this is going to be planning manager Lucille Breeze.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here before you again, as the mayor stated, to request that the council authorize the city now manager to terminate the contract for consultant services, which was known as the Diet Contract, for the comprehensive update to the zoning ordinance, which was approved by the city council on April twenty-first, and in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, to award the contract for consultant services for the project to Lisa Weiss Consulting of San Luis Obispo, in an amount not to exceed three hundred and ninety-six, two hundred and ninety-four dollars. And to authorize the city manager to execute the contract, to authorize the planning manager to approve the contract change orders in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand and twenty-seven dollars, which is included in the total contract amount. And to direct staff to proceed with a text amendment to amend the zoning ordinance regulations allowing chickens as household pets. The.
What's a chicken, sir?
On April twenty-first, the city council authorized us to move forward with a contract for the zoning ordinance, and that is actually, that was executed based on the information that we had, that we were going to have local representation. The firm was out of the Bay Area. On May fifth, after the contract had been signed, we were advised that the local person who was to be our contract person was no longer with Diet and Batia, but had moved to a firm that did not bid on our project. So after discussion with Mr. Diet, the principal of the firm, and with our city attorney, we went back to our list and found that there was a local firm that had bid on our contract who met all of our requirements, and they were headquartered in San Luis Obispo. And we had a conversation with them and went through their contract, and we believe that they are a firm that can provide the city with the comprehensive zoning ordinance that will meet our needs of the community, that they will be responsive, that they will hold the meetings and workshops and provide the community support that we need for our ordinance. Their bid did include Rincon Consultants, who is our general plan consultant. So he will be providing, Richard Dalton of Rincon will be providing the same type of service to show our general plan update and make sure that we have consistency between them. The scope of work that is provided with your staff report was reworked somewhat, and it does have a number of workshops. It did address the issue that council identified. We've moved the sign ordinance to the first part of the, the first workshop, and it would be the first item that would be identified. So we will work on that initially. It would be the first component that would be completed of the contract. We would be moving forward, if the council agrees, to this. The one thing that is not included in it is the architectural review guidelines. They were considered as an optional element in our original proposal, our request for proposal. And if the council wants to move forward, the estimate is that they would be about forty-five to sixty thousand. We don't have a definitive number. There's that range. So it is not currently included in the contract. We did try and keep the contract with the new consultant very consistent with what the contract that was originally approved by council. It does, the new contract does approve, or does contain, an element of review for the Old Town specific plan. So it may be, as we get into the contract, there may be some room in, in the numbers where we could look at the architectural review guidelines later on in the process. But at this point, we're not proposing that would be part of this existing contract that we're bringing to you. So the same meetings with stakeholder groups is identified. The contract would include monthly reports to the council to keep you updated on what's going forward. So we have included the important components that we felt that, that council wanted to see in this contract. And as I noted, the, the sign ordinance is in part of the contract, and it's been moved up to the first element. So basically, what we're requesting is that the council authorize us to cancel the Diet contract, which was the original contract, and to sign the contract with Lisa Weiss Consultants to allow the comprehensive update of the general plan, I'm sorry, of the zoning ordinance to move forward. And then, if it's council's pleasure, to direct staff to return a text amendment to the planning commission, which we can work on, which would allow chickens in the residential areas. And what the, the benefit of doing it a little bit out of sync, I guess, would be there are certain requirements as far as the care and the spacing and the, all of the regulations of allowing chickens. So we could impose those following public hearings at the planning commission at the council. And if they were working fine, then they would just be rolled into the new ordinance. If they needed adjustment, we would have kind of a test period where we could report back to the council, and we could adjust them. So that completes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Breeze. Councilmember Starbuck.
So let me be clear, on page two in the fifth paragraph, we're talking about signs as the first component of this project. So the sign ordinance is gonna be the first ordinance that is done? Chickens is a text amendment that's gonna come up initially first, too, then?
The chickens, that's a text amendment that the staff will do. We had worked on that in two thousand and twelve and taken language to the planning commission. So we do have some work done on laying out where this would be allowed, how we would look at it. And that would be something that would be done by staff initially, before we actually were holding the hearings on the zoning ordinance.
So the signs is gonna be its own separate part of this contract, then?
It's the very first component. When you look at the scope of work, it tells you, workshop number, if you look on page four, it tells you workshop number one is the sign ordinance, and the discussion includes the fact that would be the first thing to be looked at. And at the direction of the city, the consultant team will update the sign ordinance for review and adoption prior to the complete updated zoning ordinance. So that would be, would go forward first.
Okay, understand. Now, just to, so I'm clearing, you know, the economic development element is, is an optional element that we, the council, at once had said, let's go ahead and include. But in here, we're gonna wait until everything is done in the ordinance before we authorize the expenditure to do the economic development element? Is that how I understood that?
No, the economic development element is part of the general plan, and that is in its final stages. That's going tomorrow night to Planning Commission for adoption. It's the last element of the 2030 general plan. Once that goes to Planning Commission for the hearing, then that will come forward to council with a recommendation for adoption. So you'll be seeing that next month, the economic development element.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Breeze? Okay, we're gonna open this up for public comment.
John Lynn Lompoc resident. Surely, I'm glad that we're moving forward with this. This is something we need to do. I have a couple of questions, just legally, to make sure that we don't have any issues. Number one, it seemed to me that when we, the council approved the prior contract, one council member asked the question if it was the low bid, and I believe the answer was yet, was yes, except this is a lower bid. So I'm wondering if the bidder has been allowed to amend their bid amount? And number two, in the prior company that we agreed to the contract with, they partnered with another company, Rincon Consultants, and I was interested to see that these guys are also partnering with Rincon Consultants. So it may be that they both partnered with them in the initial bid offering, because these folks- So it may be that they both partnered with them in the initial bid offering, because these folks are from San Luis. But again, if that's been changed, then I think you might ask the city attorney just to be safe, if we follow the correct procedures as we've accepted bids. We're not allowed to amend them, per se, going forward. We would have to go back and rebid it. And I'm not recommending that. I'm just recommending that you ask that question. I did take time to look at the qualifications of the current consultant. They have done a number of projects. They have great experience in municipal codes. It looks like they're well-equipped to do this. I did have one concern on their website. The very first thing they said was they wanted to build transit-oriented, walkable communities. And I would hope that they would understand that that isn't the way our community works, and we don't want to go all the way down that road and spend a bunch of money on it. So the council might want to address that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynn. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one step forward, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion.
All I got to say is that on, on page three of four, as part of the process, stakeholders groups will be identified and interviewed by consultant teams to ensure maximum public input. And that information will be given to the council and the Planning Commission on updates. Process will be prepared and distributed posted calendar websites. I think the city website, I mean, I'm real pleased to see that, that we're going to get updates continually out of that.
Any other comments from council? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Councilmember, Councilmember Mosby?
Go ahead. I could, I could let the elder gentleman go first, if you'd like.
Councilmember Humdol?
I'll, I'll move. Staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's vote. That passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, written communications?
Nothing.
Okay, oral communications. This is your last opportunity to speak to the council concerning any item you so choose. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Lingel, Molly Gerald, interim director of the library. Even though I'm addressing you after the fact of your vote, I want to mention to you that a number of the library employees were here earlier, and there's two who came after. They got off work this evening. And on behalf of all of us, I just want to say thank you for this move toward full status as a city department for the library. In a special meeting in 2007, the state librarian came to Lompoc from Sacramento and met with city administration, with the trustees and the library staff. What she said is, your local library situation in Lompoc is an anomaly. Most city libraries are departments within their city, unless they were formed as a special district with dedicated tax funding. Action on the departmental status was considered at that time in 2007, but it was deferred. And several years later, the idea came when we had a joint meeting with council again. But it was deferred due to the many cutbacks citywide at that time. It just wasn't the right time. And for the past year, our city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney have worked with you, have worked with us to consider this as we move forward into full departmental status. And we're just confident that the library can be a more vital and active partner in city government, that can provide greater service to our community as a city department. So thank you so much for your, your confidence.
Thank you. Next, please.
So you're probably tired of me asking questions, so I'm just going to give you some good news. I'm happy to report that today, the engineer completed the work on the motorsports project grading plans. They will, it will require some minor corrections to our other plan set, so we hope that we will have that done and filed by the end of the week. And hopefully, it will be deemed complete quite quickly. I just wanted to point out one thing that I think didn't get a whole lot of press in this evening's, and that was the purchase of the pavement patching machine. Now, all of you have had pothole complaints. And I want to compliment the city staff, because we started talking about this about four years ago when we didn't have any money. And they moved forward with a piece of equipment that's designed to be very efficient. It has everything on the back of the truck. So it's efficient, but it's also very safe for the employees to reduce injuries. There is one other step that I'm sure the city manager will be working on in the near future, which is a new pavement patching plan. Because the way this truck works, we will save a lot of cost, and we will be able to do a lot more patching, a lot more quickly. And there are any number of agencies out there, both counties and cities, that have plans that revolve around this type of piece of equipment. So you should get fewer pothole complaints in about eight months when the truck comes in. And it's a beautiful piece of equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Good evening, Frank Campo. I would just like to, as a member of the Military Affairs Committee for the Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to thank those that came out this past Independence Day to celebrate our independence. And just to remind everyone that starting this Friday, Old Town starts up for the next few weeks. So come on down and have a good time. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment. And our oral communication, we're going to move on to council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
Basically, I just wanted to thank everyone for this Flower Festival that we had. I wanted to bring that up. My wife and I really enjoyed the parade for the first time. And I was really impressed with, I was impressed with the food and everything else that was on there. I thought it was a great job. I didn't see any problems out there, at least from my viewpoint. So I wanted to just say, it was a great thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Humdol?
Yeah, to follow up with that, I want to thank all the people who donated cars for people to ride down to the parade route. It's probably the largest crowd we've had in a long time on the parade route, all the way down. The weather was abnormal for three days. We get, we get good days, but nothing like what we had for Flower Festival this year. Along with that, I was, we made the swearing-in of our new police officer, and I didn't get his name to bring him in. But he's a graduate, one of the first graduates of Hancock College. So we're hoping in the future we should have the swearing-in before the whole council and everybody else. It was excellent job. We had a fantastic turnout. But it was nice to have a graduate. Eddie born and raised in Lompoc. So I mean, it, true Lompoc. His uncle and grandpa and grandmother and uncles were there. Along with that, I did go to, do the fireworks ride-in with the police officers, police, Nolan Jones. And it was real interesting to go drive around town sitting in the police office and watch that, watch the fire and check. But I want to be very specific. He did a fantastic job working with the public when he got out of the car and caught them doing, doing some of the things they shouldn't. But he sat down and worked with them nicely, and the people are very pleased at the type of work he did. I said, I enjoyed the Flower Festival parade, and I thank you for the cars. And the festival was excellent, Sheldon Green, Shannon Green. He also was, he's been making designs and cartoons in the paper since the eighties. I've seen some of it, so I thought that was excellent. But anyway, I wanted to do, thank the police officers and all the rest.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck?
Like to remind everybody that this Friday, 5:00, is the alumni cruise, where the city manager and myself will do the first hot lap in a '37 Chevy, followed by, he's going to take his wife to the park for the movies at Missy Grease.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, again, I don't think we can say enough and thank enough for the people and the volunteers for the Flower Festival, because you had yellow shirts and red shirts and security everywhere. I think it was one of the biggest Flower Festival I've seen in my 51 years here in the great town of Lompoc. But it's amazing how much volunteerism goes into this. It's not, it is, it is significant. It's a really, really, you know, have to thank those people. The other thing with fireworks, in my analysis, fireworks, the illegals were down quite a bit, but still down, not down enough. I did see a lot of families having a good time with the safe and sane. And, you know, congratulations, Lompokians, we made it through there and using the safe and sane the right way. But we do really need to work on those illegal fireworks. You guys need to stop them. They are illegal, and they do cause damages. But it also brings me one other point, and as I wanted to get a council request for a review of Resolution Number 5858, Print of these 13. And I guess I'll need two other councils members on that. And what that is, is the, I just want to go over and review, and this is the sewer rates, and an understanding that's come to me in my, going through. We basically have three sewer rates. We have minimum rates, average rates, and actual rates. And if we could have a discussion, I've kind of, in the last couple of months, been bouncing around through city staff, and a lot of city staff isn't quite sure how these work. And I think we've got to the point now, in the last day or two, of how, of how they, they process. But it's, there's been some confusion that has been expressed to me, and then I've expressed to the public, and how things were done. I guess there was a lady who worked here for 30-plus years who did it one way, and things have changed a little different. So if I could get, I guess, two other council members to come along, so we could have a, a discussion of the, of this resolution.
A discussion or a presentation?
Little bit of both, I guess. We're not, not like to make any changes to it. I'm just, till we can get some education. So I guess it would be a presentation.
I'd love to learn about the three levels of sewage.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be a part of that also.
Okay, it's been made a motion. I guess we need to vote on this. Yes? Got three? Okay. Okay, Councilmember Mosby?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Well, since everyone's commenting on the Flower Festival, the comment I'd like to make on the Flower Festival is I apologize for not being here. It's the first one I've missed since I've been in Lompoc. I did have a family emergency back in the state of Wisconsin. I had to attend a funeral. So I'm sorry I missed it. That sort of took precedent on that. But I'm glad we had a successful Flower Festival. It was probably because I was not here. Councilmember Humdol mentioned the Public Safety Academy. And I had a call this afternoon, yesterday afternoon, from a former firefighter, Stan Hart, who is now an instructor out at the Public Safety Academy. And he said, Bob, you've got to come out here. He says, we have, I believe he said, 20 Italian firefighters that are doing some training over there. So not only are we getting local fire departments, police departments, public safety, training at our facility, local, we've got state, some throughout the United States, but now it's international. So I mean, it's amazing what this Public Safety Academy is doing. They're here for four days from Italy. They enjoyed la botte's the other night. They said it wasn't quite like Mama's, but they loved Mama. So anyway, great things from that. July 4th, I agree, was a great presentation. I, I attended the public, or the city fireworks at Hoke Stadium. If you've never been there, you have to attend at least once. It is the most fantastic fireworks show I've ever seen. I was just lying down on the field, just watching them explode above my head. It was, it was really, it was a great experience. And then you've got this music to it and everything. Okay, I did attend a Northern California Power Association meeting in Roseville on June 24th and 25th. This was at city expense. They paid my hotel and mileage. I used my own vehicle to drive there and back. And that's all I have to report. So, let's see. Next, we have adjournment. We will be adjourned to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting at 6:30 PM on July 21st. Thank you, and good night.